Meeting for December first, two thousand and twenty. Before we get started, I just need to read a few notes here. I am Carrie Martinback, the Chair of the Planning Board. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, the town of Northborough has been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to the Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed in the agenda, by tuning into cable access television government channels, Verizon Channel thirty or Charter Channel one ninety-two, or by visiting the town's website and going to the Department of Cable Access Television and click What's Playing Live? If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. Um, let's see, I will now confirm that board members and persons anticipated on the agenda are remotely present and can be heard. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Millie Milton?
Aye.
Amy Paretzky?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Michelle Gillespie?
Aye.
Great. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kathy Jubert?
Here.
Bob Federico?
Hello.
And Fred Lashfield?
Here.
Okay, great. Um, just for some quick ground rules, I'll invite each speaker on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will write their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer while not speaking and to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board or Committee will be conducted by roll call vote. Um, let's see, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comments. I'll ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, the Chair will call on each by name and afford three minutes. There's no executive session this evening. If there are any technical difficulties, um, the Chair will suspend the meeting while attempts to resolve are made. And if there are any disconnections and reconnections of board members, that should be accurately reflected in the meeting minutes. So, thank you. Why don't we get started? First on our agenda tonight, we have the continued public hearing for four twenty-five Whitney Street, Special Permit Site Plan Approval and Special Permit for Groundwater Protection Overlay District, excuse me, District for STERIS AST. I'm going to bring in the attendees, let's see. Huh, I don't, who did I have?
There's Rich Whitehouse from VHB, um, is their engineer.
Oh, he is, okay.
And I, and I don't know who the phone call is four seven three.
Okay, so why don't I bring in Rich?
Maybe Rich might know if it's someone from there.
Hi, Rich.
Good evening, everyone. How are you guys doing?
Good thanks. Do you know who, is, is there another person you're waiting for with the last three digits, four seven three?
Uh, that should be Steve Mados.
Oh, okay, hold on. If it's not, this person will be surprised. Okay. Um, Stephen, is that you?
Hello.
Oh, okay.
Hello. Sorry, my laptop.
Hello, welcome. Do you want to say a prayer review or not?
Yeah, sorry, my laptop, uh, died over the weekend, so I'm on my phone.
Oh, okay. No problem. Okay, great. So we have Attorney Mades on the line and we have Rich Whitehouse from VHB on the line from STERIS. So, as we met last time, we were in the process of finalizing the peer review consultant. And at this point, we have a final peer review person who, Kathy, did we send out the contract to already?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's been signed and ready to go.
Okay, great. So, the, I'm sure as you, I assume you know, Environmental Partners was selected after a evaluation by the evaluation team. And then the subcontractor for the radiation component is CN Associates. So they will be joining Environmental Partners in the peer review. Um, Kathy, is there anything that you'd like to add in terms of next steps or what we, what we anticipate to happen next?
Sure, we're, we're in the process, um, as Steve is aware, or excuse me, Mr. Mattis. We are in the process of setting up the fifty-three G account, which is the consulting account for the peer review. So, um, that should be set up, you know, hopefully by the end of this week. And, um, and then the Environmental Partners will start their process. I'm, I'm anticipating, um, just with my, through my discussions with them, that it'll be about a month or so. Um, you know, give or take, um, you know, for them to conduct, conduct the peer review. And then, uh, once they get, you know, close to finishing, we'll set up a meeting, um, for them to attend a Planning Board meeting and make their presentation.
Okay. Any comments or questions, um, from either Rich or Stephen? Any questions from you or comments?
Uh, no, I appreciate Kathy's, uh, effort, if I may, and, um, I was gonna ask about the timeline, but I guess a month sounds probably reasonable in light of, you know, we do have holidays coming up, so. Um, and I, I don't know if the peer reviewer will reach out to us with, if they need any additional information or go through the Planning Board office. Um, but we're available. I want that to be known.
Okay, great.
So, we look forward to getting the report.
Great. Any questions or comments from board members? Any other comments from staff?
No, I'm all set. And I'll just, I'll let, you know, I'll just let the Planning Board know through an email. Um, I mean, just so that, you know, you're aware of the timeframe. As soon as we, um, get the fifty-three G account, like I said, which should be by the end of the week, um, we'll get that established and, um, and start the review.
Okay. Um, this is a public hearing. If there are any pub, um, excuse me, if there are any public comments, I will take them now. Just raise your hand. Give me a minute. Okay, doesn't look like there are any public comments at this time. So, why don't we, if there's no further discussion, um, it seems like we're on a good path at this point. Um, in terms of continuing to the next time, we have the option, our next two meetings are the first week and third week in January. Kathy, I think you mentioned you thought maybe the first week would be a good check-in point?
Yeah, your, your two dates for January are the fifth and the nineteenth, you know, sticking with the first and the third Tuesdays. So, I, I would anticipate, you know, having something, um, hopefully the full, um, review done, but it, but certainly something done by January fifth. So, to me, that makes sense to continue this to January fifth.
Okay, does that work for the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, if they don't have a full report by the fifth, I'm just looking at the calendar, so. Say they get started next week and then we have Hanukkah and Christmas and New Years. Is that, if, for the applicant, if you come on the fifth and there's not a full report, is that still a good use of your time? Would you want to do the next, we, we, that next meeting, or do you want to check in on the fifth regardless?
Um, I, I, I'm just speaking for myself. I think the fifth, uh, you know, I, in the interest of time, if, if this peer reviewer, who knows what anyone can do during the holidays this time, this year, right? But, uh, I will, I will take the fif, uh, the January fifth meeting date. And if we need the second meeting date in January, that will be available for that as well.
Okay. Okay, so I think at our last meeting, we talked about, um, moving our meeting time to six thirty. So, is, does six thirty sound like a good time for the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Kathy, do we have any other public hearings scheduled that night?
No, not yet.
Okay. Okay, then. So, is there a motion to continue the public hearing for four twenty-five Whitney Street to January fifth at six thirty?
So, motion to continue the four twenty-five Whitney Street special permit to January fifth at six thirty.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, so we'll, we'll give the motion to Millie, the second to Anthony, and then for a roll call vote, um, all in favor, Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Okay, great. The hearing continues to January fifth. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, take care. Bye-bye. All right, let me move out. Okay. I think that's everybody. Yes, it is. Okay, next on our agenda, we have, we're actually moving on to old and new business. So, we start with consideration of the minutes. Uh, let's start with October sixth. Did everybody have a chance to read the October sixth minutes? Mm-hmm. Okay, are there any amendments to the minutes? Actually, we know, Amy, you, you had had some amendments to the minutes. So, if you want to walk through there.
Okay, do you want me to walk through them all, or has anyone, all right, I'll walk through them if you want. Do you want me to share the screen? Is that easier, or? Me, um, it's up to anybody else. Okay, let's see. Okay, can you see that?
No.
What the? Okay. So, um, I don't know why this is over here. Okay, so, since it's in PDF and not in Word, I had to cut and paste onto a different page. So, this is page one of the ten-six-twenty-twenty minutes. And the application is for a special permit from the ZBA with a technical review from the Planning Board. So I was just changing it to technical review. And the fourth line down, I added, "And according to the applicant, neither were in good condition."
Can I, can I, can we just, Amy, can we give you input as you go through this?
Okay.
There's so many changes.
Sure.
So, um, that is actually not true. The reason that it's in that location for where the driveways are is where, um, the Mass, um, you know, where the highway, Mass Highway Department wanted it to be, because Route twenty is a federal and state highway. So, it wasn't because the applicant chose that, that's because Mass Highway requested and, and told them that's where it was gonna be. So it's not just, the way this sounds like is the applicant said, "There wasn't another good location, so I put it there." I know that because I was on the Design Review Committee with them.
Okay, well, this was a summary, so that's why, and this was before. And it said, "According to the applicant," I just added that because it was a summary of what was said. We didn't have anything from the Mass DOT. And I don't know, did you do, did you get a letter from the Mass DOT?
It doesn't matter. What I'm saying is, it's not that the applicant said, "Because it wasn't a good location." It's that, that was, that's the reality, that's the narrative about it, is that it's because the DOT wanted it that way. So you can ask staff to weigh in, but I don't agree with that comment.
Right, we could take it out, but.
Carrie, if I, if I could just say something on, on Amy, on this, this whole first page where, where you've added in, "And according to the applicant," you've put it in a few places.
Yeah.
Um, but it, but it's, it's not just the applicant, it's staff and, and Mass DOT. So, um, so, so I think how, I think how Melanie had captured it was correct. That, that it's not, that it's not just according to the applicant. I mean, you, you know, this is at the end, towards the end of the process in October. I mean, they had been meeting with Design Review Committee and staff, you know, well, well ahead of this, of, of, of October sixth.
Okay, that's fine, I'll leave it. I did watch the Design Review and, and I didn't see any memos from DOT, so.
No, we don't have one.
Yep.
We, we don't get memos from DOT.
Okay, so I didn't know any of the information. I did hear him say that he felt it was in the best location to close off the two. But if you want to take it out, I'm fine. Leave the first page the way it is.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's three, there's three locations, at least on the first page, where I think it needs to come out.
The technical review?
No, according to the applicant, your addition of according to the applicant.
I, I edited it twice, it's highlighted, I think.
Yeah, well, and then the third place on, in the second pair, in the.
Oh, that's page two.
Oh, I'm just looking at your page one of changes, that, that it's in three places on that first page.
See where I, at the top, where it says page one, that was page one of the minutes. And then here is page two. I had to cut and paste, because I didn't, we don't have a Word document, it was PDF, so it made it tricky. So, even though, eh, eh, page one of the minutes, I added according to the applicant twice, but if you want to leave it the way it is, I'm fine.
Okay, but leave tech, technical review, I actually have that as an edit as well, cross out opinion and make a technical review.
Okay.
Yeah.
Should I continue, or does anyone else have any other different questions on page one? Do you want to go page by page, or do you want me to go through first?
Sure, what if, I guess, yeah, just keep going, go ahead.
Um, I, I did have something on page one, just a quick, uh, spelling. On, uh, it's, I don't know how to describe it, but it's one, two, three, four, five, six lines from the bottom. There will be paved access aisles. Um, I don't think they meant islands, but. There should be A-I-L, A-I-S-L-E-S.
Okay, anything else for page one?
Who was it for me?
Okay.
So, page two, I went to according to the applicant, but we can take that out too. If staff checked it, I mean, when we heard from him, he just made this statement, so I didn't know. But, because I didn't check all the setbacks. But then further down on the page where it says, "Three quarters of the site is in Business West and the southerly quarter is in residency," I actually went back and listened, and he actually did say, "Two thirds and one third."
Okay.
Does anyone else have any comments? That was paragraph one on page two of the minutes. Does anybody, does everybody agree to change it to two thirds and one third?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so paragraph two, um, where it's highlighted, it was Mr. Shay did not have the exact size, I went back and listened, and Mr., I don't know how to say his name, Tetra, said the small office was five hundred square feet and the larger was seven to eight thousand square feet. I added that. And then down further, I said, "But in the applicant's opinion," but we can take it out, because it goes along with the, um, safe location again. So if we're gonna take it out on the first page, we can take it out this page. And then further down, it said, "She asked how large the back, how large the buffer is in the back lot, as the rear of the parcel also bo, borders residential." I went back and listened to this. And then they talked about three hundred feet, and I mentioned that they were listed as three hundred foot of buffers on the application. And then, right here, all I did was cut and paste the bullets from the slideshow, because above in the first two pages, it was everything that the applicant had stated. And then it said, "Ms. Paretzky presented a slideshow," and I just wanted to say what my slideshow stated in the minutes. So I added all the bullets, I just cut and pasted. I don't know if people want me to go down them all, or. Or just, it's up to you.
I don't think I can go through them all.
Yeah, that's why I sent it to Kathy and to Vance, hoping that people could check it if they had time. These were all from the, these were all from the slideshow. So then I deleted this sentence, because this was summarizing what I said above in the slideshow. And then I'm on the page where Mr. Federico disagreed. And so I added some lines. She said, "Mr. Federico is a building inspector and he makes the interpretation, but that his interpretation can be overridden by the ZBA if they don't agree it's grandfathered use. It is approval of the site plan by the ZBA that sets the use." She's, yep.
Amy, can I go back to, um, you, what you inserted from your slideshow? You, you have a bunch of bullets, and then it just randomly starts with one, two, and three.
Yeah.
Just so that we're consistent in the minutes, I mean, this, this is pretty, you know, I mean, I, I, I had directed, you know, Melanie to, you know, summarize things, you know, going forward. So, I mean, this is, you know, this is very explicit for the minutes, where, where we really didn't do this for anybody else, but, you know, it's up to the board, it's, it's your minutes. But if you're gonna keep it in, I just want to know, you know, it goes from bullets to then just number one. So what, what, there, there needs to be some sort of transition, or, or they can all be bullets, or?
Well, the last bullet was, well, the last bullet was a three-part test, where it listed one, two, and three. And that was all from the slideshow. If you want me to go back and fix this and summarize it, I can. I just thought the easiest way to include it was to cut and paste it from the slideshow.
All right, so I just, so one, two, and three go under that bullet, a part of that bullet? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So then, on the next page, I just added, and I did go back and listen to make sure these things were said. Um, I was here. She discussed the site plan bylaws. She said, "We're missing such as a dumpster screening, parking lot buffering, and tree height." And then, next down, I guess, because I highlighted it, I must have just added those asterisks, those little quotes. And I added the sentence, "Ms. Paretzky stated that the applicant mentioned that he was trying to meet halfway, but these are bylaws that say shall, and you have to meet them all the way or ask for a waiver of special permit or variance." These were all things that were said. When I went and read them, I felt that everything was, everything that the applicant said, but it didn't really have a lot of what I said, and I, I said a lot during this meeting. So in the next paragraph, it said, "Ms. Paretzky pointed out that they could meet the requirements if the building were made smaller and the use wasn't allowed to use." And then Mr. Tetra stated the next sentence. And then Ms. Paretzky stated she was talking about length and not height. Does anyone have any questions about any of those? So on page three, um, I added the end of the sentence, "If a letter is written to the ZBA, Ms. Paretzky would like them to look into the use of grandfathering. She didn't think it was a grandfathered use, and they're going down the same path they've gone before." And then further down, on page three, um, it was, "Ms. Paretzky said she didn't need, mean to offend anyone. She felt when she watched the Design Review Meeting, she didn't know if the members had a copy of the zoning bylaws, because Mr. Riordan and Mr. Veron wanted more buffering and talked like their hands were tied, but they are not. They also mentioned moving plans." Yep.
Just before you go on, I'm not gonna approve any of these minutes if you include what you watched on Design Review Meeting, because.
I watched it on the Planning Board Meeting.
You're cutting and pasting stuff from Design Review in here and giving your interpretation. And I just don't think it's appropriate in here.
I didn't.
This is supposed to be like a narrative, it's not supposed to be one member, one board member's interpretation. Or it's not supposed to be like a detailed of what so-and-so and another person said at another meeting. If this is the way it's gonna be, then we have to, um, wait. All of us have to look at Design Review Meeting videos and see if we walk away with the same interpretation.
This isn't from Design, this isn't, this was what was said at the Planning Board. I didn't cut and paste out of the Design Review Board.
So, I, so I see what Michelle's saying, that you're, you watched the Design Review Meeting and you brought your interpretation from that meeting. And you did in fact say this at the Planning Board Meeting, but it was an interpretation of the Design Review, your viewing of Design Review. So if, if Michelle's not comfortable with that, what if we just stick with, like, whenever you, if you want to edit your own quotes?
Okay. Yeah, we can leave out that part.
Does that, does that make that better, Michelle?
I guess.
I mean, I've been, I have no problem with board members editing their own quotes. I have a problem with board members inserting things, uh, that other people are saying or from other meetings and making it sound like it's an interpretation from the board. I just, um, I think there's just too much added in from this. In the last paragraph, there's a lot of false statements on the last paragraph that I just wouldn't approve it. I just don't know where you got it from, so.
Is this the last paragraph right here?
No, I can't tell, because there's just so many pages of yellow and white. I mean, we can go through it all, but what I'm saying is, I think she did a good job as a narrative, and we talked about this at several Planning Board meetings, without getting into like every single detail and just focusing on one member's point of view, is just to do a summarization of it. And I think she did a fairly decent job.
I actually don't agree, because some of the sentences here that I fixed were half, like, they didn't even make sense, like, they were cut in half. And, and it was definitely slated towards the applicant, like, a lot of my, a lot of things were cut out. But I'll, I'll take out the Riordan and Veron, but I, I said it at the meeting. I didn't cut and paste it from Design Review, I just want to make that clear. But I went back and watched the video, and this was what was said. And if you want to take it out, I will, but I don't like it being perceived that I cut and pasted from the Design Review Meeting, because I didn't.
Well, this is coming back from you reviewing a Design Review Committee. I mean, I don't think all members went and sat and watched a Design Review Meeting to take segments of the Design Review Meeting to put it in the minutes. It's just not what this was intended for.
Yeah, but I didn't watch it to put it in the minutes, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
This, well, this was October sixth, and I actually said it at the meeting. In the paragraph above, you were saying you were offended, and I was trying to say, "That's not what I said." That's not.
Did you have something, Kathy? Sorry.
Yeah, Carrie, I just wanted to make, um, a, a, a comment about something, um, that Amy just said about, um, one of my staff members, as far as Melanie, who takes these minutes, that she slated them or slanted them towards. who takes these minutes, that she slated them or slanted them towards the developer and that's, that is not, that couldn't be farther from the truth. Um, wha- what the, what the um, you know, board secretary's position is, is just to, you know, a- attend the meetings. Um, they usually watch the meeting at least one other time, if not two times, so probably in total three times to put these minutes together. And, and it's a, it's a summary of, of what transpired at the meeting. It's not a transcript. It's, it's a summary. So I just, I just wanted to make that correction and put that on record that um, that uh, you know, M- Melanie does a, an excellent job, I think um, of, of summarizing and, and, you know, capturing the entire meeting.
Okay. I don't, I don't think you meant that she doesn't do a good job. You just wanted to add, I hope, yeah, I think we think Melanie does a good job. It sounds like you just wanted to add some context, but maybe when the cases where we pull in other people, it seems like there's a sensitivity of that. So maybe we, if we are editing beyond what Melanie catches and we try not to pull in other people. It sounds like that would make Michelle feel a little better because does, what is our committee?
Yep.
So maybe we take that one out.
Okay, so I'll take out this grouping right there. The next question, section. I mean, when I said she was reading through the site design section and stated it was a framework for design review, so she was hoping they did have a copy and would feel free to follow the bylaws. I mean, it, I felt without those words in there, it was taken out of context, so that's why I added it. And then on the next part, I'm now reading it to see if. You can leave this out if you want. I'm trying to see if this part offends Michelle. It was something that I did say. I made a statement that I was just mentioning when Michelle said she was offended, I was just trying to say um, that I didn't wanna waste time for the design review and the applicants. I didn't say anything bad about design review, but wanted to help by saying if they didn't have a copy of the bylaws, they definitely should. And actually, I feel like this part should be in because the part above, Michelle was saying she was offended by what I said, and this is how I finished it. And I did say, and I went back and listened to the meeting, that I said to Michelle that I'm, I'm not trying to offend people. I just didn't wanna waste time with the design review and the applicants. And she was just saying if they didn't have a copy of the bylaws, they definitely should. And she felt the design review had more discretion than they thought they had. So I would like to leave that part in because I'm not talking about anyone else. It was what I stated in response to what Michelle stated.
Okay. Are there anything, any other, no, there's, yeah.
Yep. And we can leave this sentence out if you want, because that was what Anthony said. But we can leave it out. This is just because I went back and watched it because we had questions at this meeting about what was gonna be on the memo for the next meeting, and there was a discussion. And this part was left out of the minutes, and this is what we used when we went to write the memo. That's why I included that paragraph.
I'm not gonna agree to that, Amy.
That's fine, you don't agree.
First of all, th- there's comments in here that are just not true. And I just don't think, you know, I, I think it's inappropriate to have it in there.
We can leave it out, but I did listen to it and you actually said it. It was your statement, but since it's your statement, we can leave it out.
Okay. So are we, are there any other edits to this section we just went through? I do not have any. Does any other member have any amendments?
So I just, so this, so everything here in yellow is coming out? Is that, is that what you all just said?
That's what I'm requesting.
Okay, do you just, do you want the part that specifically calls out a quote from you, Michelle, or are you against the entire?
This is Amy's summarization of the design review meeting. And we would all have to go back and listen to the hour or two-hour design review meeting to make sure that everything was captured. That's all I'm saying. I don't think, I think we've got a plenty in here for an applicant that was already gone before ZBA. And I think we've done our due diligence. I don't understand why all of a sudden all of these things were pulled from watching videos of design review and put in. And so I would need to have the time to go back and watch and just confirm that what is being stated here, because it's someone else's analysis, right? So like I said, like Kathy said, the secretary goes through this. She's listening in right now. She listens in again. She writes a narrative, a summarization, and that's it. I don't think I've seen in a while to have this many paragraphs added in. I'm just saying because a lot of it has to do with me, I would just like to go back and make sure that that was what I said. I just got these.
And I just wanted to state for the record that I went back and watched the planning board meeting. I did not cut and paste from design review like Michelle keeps saying. I don't wanna argue with Michelle, but I could give you the minutes, the time that I listened to this statement, and it wasn't from design review. I'm okay with taking it out if it makes you uncomfortable, but it was said at the planning board meeting, not at design review.
Okay. So it, this, this, this paragraph right here is a recap of the, the end of the discussion at the planning board meeting. This highlighted in yellow before us.
Yep.
So what, what if we take out the part where Michelle talks about design review? That whole section from Ms. Gillespie all the way to my name?
Yep.
And just get rid of that? That, everything left would be from the planning board meeting?
Yep.
Michelle, does that sound like a reasonable addition as long as we take out that whole middle section with you and design review?
I'm okay with it, but I think it's a repeat of what the secretary has already done for us. So I don't understand why it has to be put in, but I guess if you want to, I mean.
I, I can explain why I put it in.
No, that, that.
It's because we're talking about what to put in the memo. And the, these minutes came out like a while ago. And I made these changes a while ago when I first watched it before we talked about writing the memo. And those statements were made to write the memo, so that's why I thought they had to be in there.
Okay. So, but we haven't, this hasn't been stated yet in another area of the minutes, the, all the information on this section here. Okay. Okay, does that, does that sound okay, Michelle, to take out that middle part there?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
So, so what's coming out from where it says Ms., I, I, I'm sure Melanie's getting this, but I just wanna have a backup.
All the way from Ms. Gillespie up to my name.
Okay.
And it probably should say Ms. Martinek instead of Carrie.
So those two sentences are coming out, okay.
Yeah. So that just summarizes the memo discussion. Okay.
And those were all my changes for that meeting, I mean, for that whole October sixth.
Does anybody have any additional edits?
Um, I just had one quick edit, uh, Carrie, which is um on page five. Um, uh, in two places, this in the bottom paragraph, we referenced three seventy and it should be, um, it's dead three thirty and three fifty. So we'll just make that change in-house.
Okay. Um, I had a quick under, actually, page nine on the continued discussion for preliminary subdivision. It just starts off with Amy made a motion to continue the discussion. So I just wanted to note that we, um, now I can't read my writing, received a letter from the applicant requesting a continuance or something to that effect, just to note, however you want to say it, but just to note that we received a letter requesting the continuance. Otherwise, Jamie just made a motion out of the blue. Where is that?
Yep.
Yep, okay. Oh, yeah, on page nine. It's the, the last continued discussion. There's just one little paragraph there to continue it. I just wanted to know we received a letter from them requesting.
We'll add that.
Okay. Okay. That was it. Okay, anything else?
I did a, a couple. So going back to page four, the first real paragraph, second line from the bottom where it talks about two applications are before the board, semicolon, then it says two, the word two. It, I think it should be a two, the number two dash family because that was a little confusing.
Oh, I see.
Where else it's referred to as a two dash family, two-family dwelling.
That makes sense.
Can, um, can I just go back? Um, and again, Melanie may have gotten this, but on on Amy's um one, two, three, on her fourth page of edits, um, right in the middle where it says, so when it comes to the planning board or zoning board, they don't ask, why didn't the applicant have a fifty-foot buffer? Did you take all that out?
Oh, I'm not looking at it. Um, Amy, do you have that?
I just, I don't know where you left that, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, am I on mute?
No, you're.
Okay, um, I'm not sure where you are. I just closed those minutes, but I'll open them again. What?
So it's in, it's on the fourth page of your edits. And it's right smack in the middle. Um, I, I know you took out the, you know, because Mr. Riordan and Mr. Varan, I know that came out.
Yeah.
Then it says um in yellow, so when it comes to the planning board um, or the zoning board, why don't at, why, they don't ask, why didn't the applicant have a fifty-foot buffer? And now we wasted the design review time and the applicant's time. Did all that come out?
No, I wanted to leave that in because that was my response to Michelle's comments. Like, if those are left out, then then I didn't respond. I'm just saying I didn't wanna waste people's time. That's why I added the con, why I said that at the meeting.
Okay, now I just, I'm just, I didn't hear whether you voted to take that out or not, so it's staying in. That's all I needed to know.
Yeah, I think we just wanted to take out the Mr. Riordan and Mr. Varan part.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Millie, did you, you sounded like you had additional ones.
I did. Um, just again, some small ones on page six. Second line from the bottom, it talks about, the sentence starts with, he also explained the truck court. Was that, I think that's supposed to be the truck count.
Oh, no, there might have been a court though, Millie. Um.
Wait, you're on the bottom, Millie, towards?
Yeah. Last, really the sentence from the, second from the bottom.
There was that area, that was the truck court area on that up, on that site plan.
Okay.
That might be court.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
You got eagle eyes, though.
I'm an editor. And I think that was it for me.
No. Okay. Any other amendments? Okay, so overall, we had a couple of modifications for the first few pages, except for the, the few notes that said the, the applicant's opinion. We're taking out anything that is a quote from somebody else. Specifically design review, then one quote from Anthony. And then we are taking out um at the very end, Michelle, her, anything um that said from Ms. Gillespie onto the um design review component there. That's coming out the very last paragraph. Millie, we have um edits, two edits from staff changing three seventy to three thirty and three fifty. Millie had a few um minor corrections. And then I had um, just to note that the applicant has requested a continuance on, on that last page. So that's the gist of the minute amendments. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I make a motion to accept the October sixth twenty twenty minutes as amended.
Okay, uh, second.
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Carrie is an aye. Okay, so the minutes pass as amended. Uh, next we have the minutes from ten twenty, eleven four, and eleven seventeen. I am not prepared on those yet. I did wanna actually go um take a close look at ten twenty before approving, and I just didn't have a chance for November yet. I don't know if anybody, did everybody else have a chance to go through all the minutes?
I did, but.
Really? No, I did.
I have not.
Okay, is it, can we, can we continue the rest of the minutes to next meeting on the sixteenth?
Sure.
Alright, so next meeting, we'll look at ten twenty, eleven four, and eleven seventeen. Okay. Let's see. Oh, next we have the uh, zero Bartlett Street Special Department and Site Plan Decision. So Kathy sent that, a copy out to the board yesterday, was that yesterday? I lost track of time.
Yes, yep.
Okay. Did everyone have a chance to look at the decision?
I did not, actually.
I've only got through the first couple pages.
Right, I didn't have time to go through it.
Okay. For anyone who did take a look at it, are there any initial questions that we can look at now? Are there any initial thoughts or questions from board members?
I didn't really go through it yet because it was, it was too late and I didn't have power.
Um, okay, I did think I had a question. So I did, I read through it a couple times and I, I, there was so much that I feel like I need to step away and come back to it and look at it again. This is, this is a long one. But there was so much information in it, so thank you for pulling this together. This must have taken a really long time.
I'm not gonna lie.
This looked like a hard one, for sure. Um, let's see, I think the question I had just in terms of um the, for all of the letters, do we literally have to, we have to list every single letter?
If it, if it came in as, as information for you during the public hearing, yes.
Okay, no, that's okay. I just wasn't sure. So, alright. And then in the some cases where they didn't have like a, a subject line or anything, does that matter? Or we don't have to say anything about the letters, just that it came?
Right, right. The um, the, I, I took it, um, I wrote it exactly as the, whoever was the author, exactly how they addressed it. You know, to the, to the planning board. Sometimes it was to the planning board, sometimes it was to the Northbrook Planning Board, sometimes it was to Chairperson Martinak, sometimes it was to Chairman Mark and Martinak. Uh, some people had, most people had a subject line, some people didn't. So it's, it's all exactly, it's reflected exactly as they wrote it.
Okay. And then, okay, and then we have all the letters from the attorneys, do we include that as well?
Yep, they're, they're in here as um, there's, I, I Yep, they're, they're in here as, um, there's, I, I broke it down usually. Because there were so many, I just thought it was a lot, a lot easier to read. Under the exhibits, usually we just have, um, you know, the exhibits as far as what the application is and all the plans that were associated with. And then anything else that came in. But in this particular instance, what I wrote down, I mean, how I categorized it was, you know, there were the applications that came in, then there was an additional information or additional documents that the applicant, um, submitted. Um, you know, throughout the public hearing process. Then I put together all of the staff correspondence. Um, and that's just, you know, in a chronological order. And then the same thing with the, um, uh, letters and emails received in opposition to the application. So those are all there in chronological order also.
Okay, and then, did we have anything from Mass DEP?
Uh, no. I, I'm assuming the Conservation Commission probably did. Because DEP, you know, I mean, that's who the Conservation Commission is under. But, but we didn't have any letter or anything from DEP, not, at least not that I have in the file.
Oh, okay, so for the, um, special permit application, one of the things is just the letter from DEP. So it must be in the application somewhere. Well, I guess maybe if they didn't have all.
No, I, it, it, we don't have the letter, Carrie, but it was, you had asked, um, the, the applicant for a summary of everything that they had received to date, and he put it together in a letter that he sent to you. And that's, and I have that listed in here. As, as a, as a, an additional document that was received by the board.
Okay.
And then, um, in the hearing section, um, that's listed also.
Okay. So as we're reviewing this, because it sounds like everybody needs to go back and look at it. What would you recommend we should be thinking about? Is there, so maybe if you just share the method to your madness, like when you include stuff in the hearing section, what, why do you pick certain things up? Is it things that's, you know, support the decision or, you know, I don't mean to make this a training class that you're all of a sudden in charge of, but just so.
No, no, that's.
What would be helpful i- in reviewing this to, you know?
Well, I worked, um, in, you know, um, coordination with town council because as I, you know, had said to you in an email, I mean, it, you know, there's, you know, I, I'm, and I'm sure you all assume the same thing, that there will be an appeal of this decision. So, so with that in mind, you know, I, I wanted to write the, a, a defensible decision. I mean, they all should be written that way, and they are. But in the hearing section, what we do is, or what I do, and, and then we do the same thing for the, for the ZBA. It's really just, uh, um, you know, capturing sort of highlights of those hearings. I mean, you have the meeting minutes, you know, that, and, and the tapes now, you know, everything's recorded. So anyone can, can, you know, go back to a, a, a tape, but that's not what the purpose of a decision is for. So the decision, you basically, you talk about, you know, what, what it is that the decision is for. Um, and then the, as far as the exhibits, what was submitted for the board to consider. And then any additional documents that came in, whether they were, you know, uh, additional reports or, um, staff reports. Um, you know, uh, residents, uh, letters and, and emails. And then in the hearing section, what I did hear was, um, because it went for, you know, three or four. I can't remember if it was three or four, but, um, I just summarized, um, I just, I went through the, the minutes and, um, I went through my notes and then summarized, um, you know, the, what each, what was captured basically at each one of those meetings, and then what the board asked for, for additional information. And then at the next meeting, you know, the information that was provided to you is summarized. And then if there were, you know, additional questions from the board. And then when you go to the, so that's how the hearing section is done. And then when you go to the findings of fact, you know, the, that's, I mean, that's exactly what it is, is one of the facts, you know, the, it's not anyone's opinion. It's what, again, what was either, you know, submitted to the board. You know, i- i- and then including statements that the board made in making their decision. And then the, um, you know, and then, and then some of this lines up with, in the findings of fact, when you have a special permit. You know, a, a general special permit as, as these, um, as, as this was. You know, you go, I mean, using the special permit criteria, um, so you through various sets of minutes, you know, you all made comments about those criteria, so those are included in the findings. And then obviously, you know, the decision is the conclusion of, of how you voted.
Okay, thanks for walking through that. Any questions or comments on that?
So I mean, hopefully the fact that, um, that the town council, I mean, this took me over two weeks to write.
I know, it's a lot of work.
It was, it, it, this, I mean, there's a lot in this, in this decision and, you know, there's a lot riding on it for, for the town. But, um, you know, just, um, hopefully the fact that, um, you know, town council has already, you know, gone through this. Made his corrections, as I explained, um, in a, in an email to all of you. It really, it really was like some legalese speak, um, that, that he provided. I mean, I can send his draft to you if that's helpful. He, he didn't change the, 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 the context of this at all, but, um, you know, a- and all the way down to places where I had a capital and it should be a small letter. I mean, it, you know.
Would anyone be interested in seeing the edits from council or?
Sure. Why not?
I'd be interested to know what he zeroed in on, anyway.
Yeah, I, I mean, just for, I mean, I'll certainly send it to you, Carrie, I mean, of course, you know, but like, I'll just give you an example. Where if anyone has this in front of them, like on page five. Number 32, I referenced the letter from Attorney Timon. He added in the name of his firm.
Oh, okay.
I, I didn't have the, the firm's name in there. A lot of places I had just referenced map and parcel, and he added in assessor's map and parcel. On, on page seven. There, there's a couple of places where I re, I referred to Mr. Donahue, that was changed to Attorney Donahue. Couple of spots where I had, um, a capital S, capital P for special permit. He's changed those to, you know, small s, small p.
Okay. All right, so for me, I mean, I read it a few times, but then I stopped absorbing the information. I, I was just reading, it was so much to take in, so. Definitely being able to sit with it and read it again, but this, thank you, this was, this looked like a lot.
Wow. Is there a time limit for the appeal or?
Yes, you have, when it involves a special permit, um, state law, um, allows for 90 days from the close of the public hearing for you to make and file your decision. So you've already made your decision. Now this is just, you know, filing it, um, with the town clerk's office. So you, you have within 90 days from October 20th. That's when you close the hearing. And then once it's filed with the town clerk's office. You know, I mean, we've never used those 90 days, but, um, once it's filed with the town clerk's office, then, um, the appeal period of, for 20 days starts. So within 20 days. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You have 90 days to file it?
Yes, to make your, to make your decision and file it.
Okay.
Yep, so from October 20, you know, you're a month, you know, a little over a month into that.
Yeah.
So I mean, I, you know, I would, I, I would, um, in, anticipate that, you know, if, if it wasn't tonight, that it will be at your next meeting. You know, that you would ratify this and then, um, you know, Carrie would come in and sign it.
Okay.
And then we'd be well within our 90 days.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, so do, we don't have to do anything, we're not really continuing it or anything. We will just revisit it, uh, December 16th. So if everybody could be sure to take some time before the 16th to really read through this and absorb it and, be prepared to finalize December 16th.
Okay.
So we can get that squared away. Okay, so, uh, do we, we had on the agenda, just any additional traffic thoughts or concerns? It's just, it was more of a placeholder. Is there anything that anyone has? Um, the only thing from me there is I, I meant to send a note to CMR PC just to see if there's, um, an opportunity to use some of our hours, just to have someone come and talk about just even the region. What's, what's going on in the region and any trends or things we should be aware of, just from an educational perspective, so. Um, I can, Kathy, if either you or I can reach out to them or CCU or whatever and just see if, maybe even Sudharta, if she's willing to come to a meeting and just present any trends or information or anything like that.
So thi- this is regarding traffic, Carrie, or?
Yeah, just traffic, traffic, transportation, traffic.
And trends for, um, let me just, just so I can be specific for her.
Oh, just, you know, what is, what's going on in the region, what, you know, for people facing more and more with parcel distribution in general, what are other towns in our region doing? Is CMR PC active in any sort of, not just like from a traffic com perspective, but, you know, helping towns navigate through it and providing any insight or ideas, or even if they know of grant opportunities or just insight that they can provide that just gives us a broader view. Um, okay, so we don't, there's nothing really for, what, do we know when the master plan implementation committee kicks off?
They, um, actually, I know that, um, they are, the, the Board of Selectmen's Interview Committee are having interviews, uh, tonight. And I believe next, next Tuesday, I'm not 100% sure on that, Carrie, but I know it was two different dates. That they were interviewing, um, the people for the at-large, um, seats.
Okay. I mean, even if, I, I don't know if timing works out, but if, if master, if it makes sense to use some of their time in that way, they're more than welcome if, if CMR PC comes and talks about any of that. If the master plan implementation committee has any interest in listening in or joining in, I think that may be obviously something we could offer. I don't know if it's a good use of time or how they plan to spend their time, but that we can always offer.
Are, are you looking for, um, for central mass, we'll have them come in in January?
Yeah, whatever time, I would, however the timing works out, I don't know what their schedule is. I know that, I don't know with COVID if that changes their availability or how they're strapped or how their staff is stretched over trying to make everything work, so. You know, I realize these are our LPA hours and they try to stick them in and make it work, but they obviously have a lot going on as well. Okay, so why don't we go on to bylaws? We have, the last time we met, we had 11 different bylaws that we looked at, so I want to make sure that we get through and ha, and have a a, at least get to a point where we can decide what we want to move forward with. Um, I don't think we necessarily need a perfect bylaw in place. I think if we can take even like five minutes per bylaw, so we can get through them all, just talking about what, what the main purpose is, why i- if you're the one presenting it, what the main purpose is, what the gist of the changes would be, and then maybe open it up to a board discussion. If there are any questions or comments or just thinking about how it impacts, the, you know, other bylaws or you know, different neighborhoods or businesses or anything like that, um, just so we can have a, a good discussion about it. And if we have, and then of course, if we have extra time, we can swing back around, but just so we get through everything. Why don't we take that approach? And then I'm going to start with Millie. I talked about sober houses, so I didn't know if there's anything else on that you wanted to speak to?
No, just that, um, at this point, I haven't found any towns that have bylaws that specifically address, uh, sober houses, but I have found towns that address, um, you know, them under some umbrella of a rooming house, a lodging house, or a boarding, and they do have some limitations on the number of people, non-family members that they can, that they can put into these residences. So I'm just trying to compile a bunch of information and see what we have that might address this, what we can put together. I don't know if you have any other input, Bob, because I know you're kind of working on this with the building, but.
I had a, um, I was at a regional inspectors' meeting today with three state inspectors. And this is a concern all across the state. They seem to have been able to pigeonhole themselves into kind of a very gray area. And that in terms of zoning and building, um, the, the, the collective jury, if you will, is still out. You know, in terms of, we, we spent most of our time dealing with, um, the building codes and, and where, how do we classify the structure? And the use of the structure. In terms of the use and zoning, um, if by chance they are, uh, a protected class. About the only thing that you're going to be able to do to control is maybe site plan, uh, review. You know, parking, you know, that sort of thing. Uh, it's, it's, it, it, it may come into some sort of a, um, a situation where they fall under, you know, the exemptions. Okay, in which case the, the, the town would have basically, uh, just site plan review. But again, the jury is still out. There are a couple of towns that are pursuing it on the, with the BBRS, which is the Board of Building Registrations and Standards, um, building code. I haven't seen anything from the zoning side of things from these inspectors in terms of pushing the issue. Basically because we, we don't know where to push it to. Like I said, um, they seem to pigeonhole themselves pretty well in terms of zoning and building. Evidently, they've got a lot of high-priced attorneys that, that are designed to weasel their way through things. So far, they've been successful, but it's going to take some time for zoning and building to figure it out.
Yeah, I, I think that that's what we're, we're dealing with and, um, like I said, I think I've just seen some towns trying to define them to limit some of the, the aspects of it, you know, under a boarding house or lodging or rooming and, but I haven't seen anything, um, that's been.
You, you, you're gonna have to be careful with how to pigeonhole it and come up with a quote label.
Yeah.
Because if they're a protected class under ADA. That's federal and, you know, like I said, you know, whether it's a rooming house, boarding house, intentional community, single family, whatever. You may not have much of a, much of a choice. You know, because even our current bylaws talk about a family as basically any number of people living under a roof with common, uh, cooking and cleaning areas. So it's, it's, this is one of those things that's going to take a little time to, to really figure out what to do.
Okay, yeah.
And that was a general consensus with all the inspectors today, including the state guys. You know, they, they, they still have differing, um, opinions about how to, how to work it. And it's, it's, it just warrants further discussion, that's all it is. You know, because no matter what happens, it's, it's, some, some of this is going to have to go to court. Whether it's housing court, a superior court, or the SJC at some point. Because it's so new. or, or so slippery, I'll say, that, you know, nobody has, nobody's put their, um, gotten their head around this thing yet. But it's certainly out there.
Did you have specific bylaws in mind, Millie, for?
I, I, I think, not specifically, because there, there so far, there aren't any that I can find, but sort of trying to classify them under certain, um, aspects of the bylaws, because, a sober house is effectively, it could be put anywhere based on, on being this protected class, but where they're being put in residential areas is a, a little bit of a, you know, those are, that becomes in a home occup- occupation if somebody's collecting rent, or is it like an Airbnb, is it because they're transitional? What, what does that fall under? Any, basically, any house now can be, can, can be converted to a sober house, and you could have a lot of people coming in that are trying to, you know, make improvements in their lifestyle and their changes, but, does there need to be some, there's no regulation of these? There's no licensing of these houses, there's no, uh, there's no goals, there's no educational factor, they're, they're not a halfway house, they're, they're sort of what happens after you go to a halfway house, and you want to reintegrate into society, if you have an addiction.
Is it feasible that we are able to put something together by February?
Probably not.
Bob, based on what you're seeing out there, is that feasible, or is anybody on staff really, I just turned to Bob because you spoke to it, is it feasible that we come up with something?
I think it's going to take a little longer to figure it out. You know, I, I, I can't say that in the past two or three months that any strides have been made, made in terms of how to enforce it, or how to label it, or pigeonhole it, or somehow work with it. Um, I think right now is that the word is just getting out, to other inspectors, maybe other planners or zoning officers, that, you know, this is a situation, let's look at this together and see if we can come up with, you know, some sort of a, a pathway. And I, I'm, I'm not seeing that happening by, by February. It's just, you know, for, for as long as it's been flying under the radar, it's, 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 it's new to everybody. And, you know, if it was, if it was a cut and dried thing in the, building code, then you can maybe transfer it over to the zoning code and make something of it, but it's, 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 it's not something that, it, it's not something that's going to stand up in court right now. Because nobody's gone to court with it yet, you know, and, and, and we don't have an official pathway, to run, uh, any kind of enforcement or special permits or site plan reviews or anything like that.
Kathy, is there anything in the planners, under, sorry to interrupt you, anything in the planning underground there, or your network of people talking about it at all, or facing challenges?
No, not, not that I'm aware of, um, it, it, Airbnbs, you know, are more of a topic, um, and, and how are towns and cities, um, regulating those and handling those? But, um, sober houses hasn't really come on the, sort of on the, on the scene yet. I, I imagine it's something that's probably even very common i- in the, in the denser municipality, you know, maybe more densely populated municipalities. We, I mean, as far as we know of, th- there's one here in North Pro, um, and, and I think it's relatively new, um, past year or two years, Bob. I think is, is when we were made aware of it.
I don't even know where it is.
Oh, really? But the, um, so, so the, the short answer is no, Carrie, it, it's, it's not on the radar yet, but, you know, with, with any of the, the, the bylaws, whether, you know, whether it's this one, um, that, that Millie is, is investigating, or any of the other ones we're going to talk about tonight, it, it's, it's most helpful to know, like, what the, you know, to, to start with is like, wha- what's the issue, what, what is it that we're trying to solve? You know, as opposed to just introducing a whole new bylaw, or, or just, or just coming up with, you know, amended language, well, well, why are we doing that, you know, what, what's the issue? You know, have we tried to address it in other ways? Can we address it, you know, within the existing zoning? So those are all just things to keep in mind. The, um, I, I know with, um, you know, A- Amy submitted, um, several, um, I know, you know, you, you have one, Carrie, in particular. The, wo- working these past couple of weeks on the ZBA and the planning board decisions, I haven't had time to go through these zoning proposals, um, particularly the ones Amy that you, uh, you know, um, sent us yesterday. But I will definitely have time and, um, whether the, um, Bob, um, and or Fred, uh, Fred wants to be involved in zoning, you know, we'll, we'll sit down as staff, um, and come up with some, um, you know, responses and, you know, our, our opinions about these. So, so I, so personally, tonight, I don't have anything to say on, on the rest of these, but, but as far as the sober houses, that it's not anything yet that I've seen on the planner's radar, but it certainly sounds like it's on the building inspector's radar, so it, so that means eventually it will come to the planners.
One of the things that we were talking about with the inspectors today was, uh, the overwhelming concern for the safety of the inhabitants, in that, you know, it's not their own home, it's somebody else's building, and, you know, should these buildings be at least sprinkled? And if it's a change of use from a single-family residential to an R3 residential under the building code, you know, does it have to be made handicapped accessible? Those are all things we're trying to figure out, but the over, the overwhelming concern right now is for the safety of the occupants. You know, right now, we've got a house in, uh, North Pro that is geared to run upwards of 12 men. And, um, you know, they say there's no smoking in the building, but, they're certainly outside, and who's to say somebody's going to, you know, light one up in the middle of the night? Because I've, I've actually seen evidence of that. But, you know, the, the, the concern is, you know, way more important about safety than it is about how many parking spaces we need to cram into the yard. So, you know, the, the building is looking hard at this, you know, but again, it's just going to take time to figure it out.
Okay. Millie, does that change anything for you in terms of your thinking on this?
No, it, it, it actually gives me more, more concern and, and just to look at what the, um, you know, look at what the options are.
Okay.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, it's probably more for Bob, um, you had mentioned no one had gone to court with it yet, and that you met with a couple other, building inspectors, have any of them written bylaws, or you're just talking about it, any of the other towns?
We're just, at this point, in terms of zoning, we're just talking about it, you know, as, as actually a, 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 a second priority. Because like I said, our first priority was the safety of the inhabitants, and how do we classify the building to enforce the building code to ensure their safety? You know, and, you know, the zoning, um, because of the overwhelming issue with safety comes in the second place, I have to say it. You know, which, which is something that can be worked out, you know, and, and again, once we can get a grip around what type of building this is and how it's dealt with, with the, with the building code and how it's classified, okay, um, i- i- it, it may help with clarifications in, in any, any forthcoming, uh, zoning legislation, either by the state or through local towns. So while, while the zoning of the, these places are, um, on the radar, it's kind of a second place, and like Kathy said before, you know, let's see where, let's see if there's anything in the, on the current set of books that's going to be able to handle the situation. And, and if there's something missing, maybe we can alter what we already have, or maybe then create something to address it. But, but it's, there's a lot of moving parts, you know, you've got protected class, you've got AAB, ADA, the building code, the fire code, you know, and, and zoning, so it's, um, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to this.
Millie, did you want to, um, verbalize what pro- in your mind, what's the problem we're trying to solve with this bylaw, so that the board understands?
I think as much as anything is being aware that this is something that is starting to crop up, on being on the proactive side versus the reactive side before we get caught off guard. Uh, y- you know, if it's something that doesn't come on for this year, it's something I would certainly like to continue to look into, uh, because I think there's a lot of things that have to come in place before we just shoot something out and, and have it not really work.
Okay. Okay, great, any board questions on that or comments? Okay, uh, moving along, signs, this is Anthony.
Uh, so, I, I think for signs, just because we have so much going on, and the volume of, um, bylaws this year, I think I would like to pass over signs unless somebody else had some, uh, you know, was really enthusiastic about covering signs, I think also I'd like to, well.
He froze.
Rose.
Now I'll never know. Anthony, you froze, so we can't hear you.
I mean, overall, I still think it makes sense for, um, you know, consistency through town.
So you froze for a minute?
Yeah.
You don't mind just sitting back, rewinding for a couple of sentences?
Sure. So, I think, given the, the amount of volume we have, um, for bylaws this year, I'm going to, um, withhold and not go forward with the sign by law unless somebody else feels compelled to move forward with it. I, I still think it's important, I think it's something maybe down the road, I'd like to be a little bit more researched on it, uh, and, and understand why many towns, surrounding towns have decided to go this route, uh, to mandate, uh, frontlit signs and, at least on their main streets. So, I'm going to say, I, from my perspective, I'd like to postpone, uh, maybe look at this again next year.
Okay, any board comments on that one?
Uh, I'll just make a, a general comment, Carrie, the, um, I think once, once the master plan implementation committee starts, and, and again, you know, we've all talked about how, how we certainly, um, believe that downtown will be the first project that comes out of, or at least one of the first projects that's going to come out of the implementation committee to start working on right away. So as part of, of downtown, it's going to be all encompassing, and certainly, um, design and streetscape and facade and, and, you know, signs will, will be part of that, Anthony, for sure. Uh, you know, at least in the downtown, um, district for starts.
Yeah, for sure.
Did any board member feel, um, otherwise about this assigned bylaw? For this year? Okay, um, duplexes, Anthony, it's also you?
Yeah, so I, I, you know, I thought about this again, and I know that we've had duplexes on, um, the bylaws for the last many years, and so I, I don't want to keep, you know, drilling down on this, but I do think it's important, um, primarily for RC, I, I don't really would, I don't want to wait on this one. And again, it's protecting these heartlands, what I would consider kind of the heartlands of our town. And, um, as property prices continue to escalate, it's at such, such a rapid pace, um, and you see what almost look like tear down houses now are going for considerable amount of money, I could see people buying up multiple properties, I mean, I don't know if it's going to happen this year or in five years, but I would like to put some protections in, just in, just in RC, um, to protect really some of that, that heart, uh, land of our, our town. And it doesn't have to be no duplexes, I just think, uh, conversions on the same footprint, if that makes sense, should be allowed. But, you know, starting to combine multiple lots, uh, in these, you know, the North Gate areas and, 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 and that whole area, in the middle of the town, it may make sense at least to put some constrictions on there, so I would be compelled to, to continue to move forward. I haven't written anything up yet, be happy to do that for the next meeting, uh, in terms of just having, again, uh, no new dup- duplexes, conversions, okay, and only in RC.
I have a question about conversions, maybe it's for you, Bob. Is a conversion, um, within the same walls or within the same footprint, like, could you tear down and build in the same, like, footprint of the, you know, what square footage you have there, or does it have to be within the walls from the outside? Do you know what I'm asking, do you see what I'm asking?
Uh, would probably be in the footprint of the existing foundation.
Okay.
Yeah, it would, um, in, in the, in the, in one of the uses is, is you can tear down a house and rebuild it in the same spot, same volume, same size. Um, and you typically don't need any special permits or anything like that, if you move it, change the footprint, change the size, then you would. In terms of, you know, taking an existing home that would be large and turning it into a, um, a two-family, okay, like a duplex, um, they're going to have to put up a firewall, or fire separation, um, membrane, you know, so the, some, part of the walls, part of the ceilings, are going to have to be, have some sort of a fire protection from one residence to the other. Uh, it's not, not required in an ADU, uh, but it would, would, but it typically would be required in a two-family. Even if you have an existing structure and, and were to split it.
Well, Kathy?
Well, uh, now that Bob just mentioned, um, the accessory dwelling unit, so, it, um, just carrying, through this duplex, um, idea of, of, um, Tony's about no new duplexes, or at least this is how I understood it, no new duplexes in the residential C, conversion would be okay if it was in the same footprint. But you also have to, you know, be aware that right now you can do an accessory dwelling unit, on, on any residential property in North Pro. So, so, so what, I don't know what, what is it that you're trying to accomplish, I guess, by, by prohibiting duplexes in the residential C, is it, is it a, is it the look of a two-family, or is it, is it a two-family? Because what you end up with, with an accessory dwelling unit is, is you have potentially, you know, you have two families living on a property. So what?
My, so I guess what my intent is, is my, or my concern is that this, that, that older houses are torn down and lots combined. So you would have a lot of these smaller homes in these areas, and then you get a couple teardowns, lots combined, and now you've got a 6,000 square foot, duplex and, and that's, in, in a neighborhood that has, doesn't have those type of lots. And I don't even, I, I, I'm assuming, I think we've talked about this in the past, I'm assuming that's a possibility that you could do that in, you know, areas of North Gate and, and, and that whole area. That's my intent, and I don't think there's a, and that, those areas in many of RC, I don't think has a whole lot of space for accessory dwelling, I'm guessing again, but, um, I would, I would think that would be a limited concern or even a possibility.
Couple of things to remember with an ADU, uh, currently, if you wanted to take a house and, um, do an ADU, you can expand the footprint of the house, like a small addition and create an accessory dwelling unit. So you do have the opportunity to expand the footprint. In, in, to, to your comment about, um, people buying up houses, um, side by side and, and combining lots to build something bigger. Um, what I've been finding in the past few years is ac- actually the opposite. We have a house on a large piece of property, and they tear, they buy the property, tear the house down, split it into multiple lots, and then build, um, uh, individual, single-family homes. I, I haven't had anybody come to me saying, can we buy two lots and, and combine it and, you know, put up a duplex?
All right, but is that, are you, is that RC? Because there really isn't that many larger lots in RC that I'm aware of.
Anywhere, actually, um, uh, the two lots on South Street at the top of the hill, that was a big piece of property that was divided in two. There was one on, uh, Whitney Street, it was recently done. There was a, uh, done on Church Street about four or five years ago. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Black did the, um, it was a big old farm or something like that, and they wanted to put in four or five houses in there. Um, so, you know, that, that's been the trend that I've been seeing. Not to discount what you're talking about, because that, that option, I would, I think is very real. But, um, I just haven't seen it, and I haven't even heard of a, a suggestion about it, to be honest with you.
Right. Right. And 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 that's, you know, and I just would, I think what I'm trying to do is here to put to put some protections in for those neighborhoods. It's my only intent, uh, and you know, that's, that's where my head is at with that.
Any questions or comments from anybody?
Hey, Carrie?
Yes.
Fred, I just wanted to chime in and agree with Bob. I think that um. What Anthony said about home prices skyrocketing is true. And that as long as those houses, even if they're on small lots and they're older houses. The land value is such that it makes it difficult for uh someone to financially gain anything by combining two lots. To buy two lots, tear down two houses and then build one big duplex seems a little bit um out of perspective with the home costs. That they have to incur in the beginning, at at least right now anyways. Think what Anthony's concerned about is more prevalent when home values are way down. And then people can affordably buy two lots and merge them into one, but just my two cents.
Okay, and so is this, you're only looking at RC, Anthony, for conversions?
Only RC, yeah.
So yeah, I know you didn't write anything up. I'm not trying to force you to come up with something. So what does that by law look like to you? Just basically then it would change the use table and we'd have to write something up about conversions or? We used to have something about conversions, right, Kathy?
Um, I don't think so. Uh, conversions, you mean from a single family to a duplex?
Yes.
We have. I don't, I'd, I'd have to look through the bylaw. Uh, I'm not.
That's okay.
I I, I know in the um, I know in the uh Main Street Residential. Zoning District, we encouraged other kinds of um uses, hoping that someone would. Not tear down, you know, one of the larger homes, but find a a reuse for it. You know, if it was no longer viable to be a single family house. So we, we have some zoning in place about that, but I don't. Uh, it's not, I'm not recalling anything off the top of my head that we have something in our zoning about converting a single family to a two family.
Okay. When we did um three forty-three, that was a conversion, right?
Three forty-three Hudson Street? No, they took a, um, they applied for a special permit to uh do a duplex. So I mean, I suppose you could call that a conversion. I mean, it was a single family. Maybe it was a single family. I'm not even sure how that.
Oh, it was a single family and they went for a special permit to do a duplex, but I think that one of the conditions were that it stayed on its original footprint. If I recall correctly.
We, you know, we don't, we didn't call that a conversion. I mean, that he just.
Oh, you're right.
He went for a special permit to, you know, to um create, to change that over to a duplex.
Okay. There was not, that's all right. That's what I couldn't recall. If we specifically looked at something.
And I think, actually, Anthony, I think he was enlarging that house. Um, I think he was expanding the footprint on that. So you could square off the house?
Yeah, the the, that, the house is um essentially a U shaped. And his plan, I, if my memory is any good, was to close up that U shape. Into more of a, just a regular square or a rectangle. So, so technically, yeah, he would be expanding the footprint just a little bit, but that was, that that permission was granted.
And and has since expired.
Yeah, the variance has expired. The special permit, I think, is very close to be expiring if it hasn't already. And um, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out whether or not you need to condemn the building.
Yeah, it looks bad.
Yeah, oh yeah.
So, um, okay, Anthony, does that change anything for you or that's still something?
Well, I'd be, I mean, I don't want to put any more undue work on anybody uh to move something forward if the, if the rest of the board doesn't feel. It's worth the effort. Um, and I guess I'm thinking more longer term, but um, so maybe perhaps could we take a straw vote?
Sure. Do you want, I was just gonna do that at the end, after you go through them all.
Okay, fair enough.
Well, we'll leave you in suspense for a little bit.
Okay, um, I just want to say something about. Um, we did used to have a footnote, I can look it back up, and it had to do with conversions. I don't have in front of me now. I think it was a foot, it was a little footnote that was in our bylaws, and I have seen. A definition for conversions in other towns, whether it be Shrewsbury or, I can't remember off the top of my head, but we did. I probably have a lot of papers when we went through the duplex by law. And I could share them if we decide to go forward.
Okay, great. Um, okay, next, uh, along, I guess, similar lines is the accessory dwelling by law. So for that, um, the problem that, hold on, I'm gonna pull it up here. I'm just gonna share my screen. And this isn't meant to be a, a perfect um language. In fact, I still have some questions about it. And the last time we met, um, Bob brought up some various concerns about how these can backfire. So I left the meeting, uh, you know, thinking that I wanted to look around and see what other towns are doing. Because I do agree that there's an, there's a, there's a potential to backfire, and I want to be careful about that. And if ultimately the board thinks it's too great a risk, then that's, that's okay. But I at least wanted to put some different options out there. The problem that I'm trying to solve for is that um, there's a couple of things. So first, for, um, it's mostly for the disabled or the um senior community. We're obviously at a point where we're nearing, you know, full build out. We're at a point where we continue to hear the issue of affordability. And that's especially true for the senior population, uh, and others as well. But especially true for the senior population that wants to stay in town. Um, it's just not affordable to do so. They don't need their big house. Um, for the community, for a disabled, the disabled community, um, the problem I'm solving for is that. Just to give them an opportunity to have their own space and allow for a caregiver for them to be there as well if they need it. In some cases, there are the parents taking care of the children, and as the children get older, there's, you know, there's not always that benefit of having a parent. They can take care of you. If there's a caregiver involved, it just gives that extra space. Those are the problems I tried to solve for. We already have an accessory dwelling unit by law. Um, so um, what I did was keeping in mind some of the feedback that Kathy and Bob gave last time. I just went through and uh, we don't have to go through this word by word, but I tried to add, you know, what was the purpose of this? What we were trying to do and put some things in place. And Kathy, I know you said you haven't had a chance to really look at these, and so I don't expect anyone to have the answers. But what I tried to do was put in a couple of different things that required, you know, either proof of ownership. Or if you were to sell it, how would you then handle that? I put in a couple of different options throughout the document. The, my initial proposal was actually only going to be to change the size. And that's when we had the conversation about, well, wait a minute, that might end up being a problem you didn't uh intend. The edits that I had recommended just kind of followed along what was in the state bill for nine hundred. Um, I did some research too about average apartment size in general was about eight eighty-nine or something like that. So nine hundred seemed like it was um, you know, also in line with the state bill and, and Michelle, I'm sure you know better than anybody. Those kind of stats, but um, so I, I changed this here to sort of match up with the state bill. And then just to put some different conditions in place so that it's not, you know, there's gotta just be two people or two bedrooms. Um, but not being able to transfer ownership. I added some items for consideration that we don't have to solve tonight, but again, just thinking about what could those issues be? How do you prove ownership? I don't know, even know if this would be necessary in terms of, you know, giving Bob the ability to to look. And confirm compliance if needed. I had a couple of questions. That, you know, do we need to think about expansion? You know, is it the nine hundred? That's it? You can now go no further? And then because I put in considering different letters, that you'd have to submit notarized letters as a condition of the permit. I think that may impact the fact that right now it's by right in RC, so I I think we may have to consider, do we have to change that? Because then how do you kick off even pat, you know, sending in these letters and how, without the permit process in place? How would we enforce that? Maybe there's a different way to do it. I didn't know. So anyway, that is what I was trying to do here, what I was trying to accomplish. Basically making it bigger, making the opportunity for a bigger space. Trying to just, trying to put in a way that we could ensure that it's not abused um for other reasons. And um, obviously some out, some outstanding questions here. But any thoughts to start or comments?
Are you, are you trying to echo the state bill? Which has not yet been passed that is designed for elderly and handicapped? Cause the, the state bill talks about the nine hundred square feet, half the area of the single family dwelling. For those only, for only those two types of situations.
Yeah, so I um, I just use this as a marker for the, for the right number, because I just didn't want to make up a random number. But I otherwise, I saw that the state bill went through the um additional, you know, they defined what handicap was. They defined what, you know, they put all these definitions were. I'm not proposing this only for that population, although I did put it as a purpose here. Um, it could be for other purposes as well. It could be for um different, to enable, you know, different types of homeownership, I guess. Or I'm, I'm not sure that's the right thing. Why? What are you thinking, Bob? Did you ask that for a specific reason?
I, I guess I don't understand what you are trying to protect.
I'm trying to make it so that, number one. These, well, not just, I guess, not just seniors at the end of the day, but anyone who. It's a good question. I want for seniors who can't afford to live here to have an option to, you know, have that in-law type space. Or that affordable type space, so they're not, they don't have to find somewhere else to go. That they can, it's an affordable housing option for people. Maybe it's not just seniors, so I guess I have to think more about that. The purpose for people who are disabled is to open up the ADU. Use to just make it a little bigger for them so that it's more, it, they actually can be independent and live there. And have that space for a caretaker.
If, if, um, I'm just throwing this out there. If we, you know, we currently have a s- a set of specifications for an accessory dwelling unit. If the applicant were to apply for an accessory dwelling unit. And ask for more space because they have somebody in their family who is handicapped or elderly and they need the extra space. Uh, why wouldn't that be accomplished through a variance?
Could it be?
Why not?
I don't know.
I mean, it, again, Carrie, I haven't gone th- through this, but um. But I think the um, if, if it's a space issue, that's the problem here. Is, is two hundred square, I don't even know what the average size of a bedroom is. Is two hundred square feet an average size for a bedroom? Is, is that what this is getting at? Is that it would be enough for a second bedroom? Is that where the two hundred square feet extra comes in?
Two hundred square feet is easily a bedroom.
So, so if that.
Or a bigger kitchen, common area, bigger bathroom.
I mean, just off the top of my head, one way, uh, you know, um, instead of a variance, Bob, we. We could look at, you know, adding a a waiver um that, you know, given, given the circumstances. You know, the board may, you know, increase up to but not exceed nine hundred square feet or something. I, I, I'm, I, I just don't know what's magic about nine hundred um versus seven hundred. Because I mean, it was meant to be, the seven hundred square feet is, is what, what you see in a lot of bylaws. It's, so it's always, it's meant to be, you know, that it's definitely secondary to the primary home. And I think, again, if you get into nine hundred square feet, we have a lot of houses in this community. That are two and three bedroom houses that are, you know, not even a thousand square feet. So, you know, it's definitely sort of the, you know, maybe World War Two era house, but I mean, it's certainly. They sell so quickly in this community and every other community uh around here. So I mean, I, so I still think that, you know, nine hundred square feet is still to me a single, could be a single family house. But I'm thinking if that's what the issue is, is trying to get um, a, a, a larger unit. So that a second bedroom could be added, that, that, you know, there might be a way to do that within the existing by law by adding in. A, a waiver or something. You know, and right, and right now, the way we have the by law is, we, you know, we don't have all of this. You know, extra information, uh, you know, requiring this extra information so that the. Building inspector then has to become the enforcer of this to find out, you know, who's living there. You know, did, did someone pass away? Now who's living there? You know, that, we, that's why we, we took that out. It used to be in our bylaws, um, particularly for fifty-five and older housing, housing. But the, I, again, those are, I haven't even read this, Carrie. Those are just my initial thoughts with what you're, with what you're, you know, explaining tonight.
Okay, no, that's something I consider. I don't, I definitely.
That it might be more onerous. Like, I don't, I'm not aware of, um, um, I mean, we don't have a lot of accessory dwelling units. And that is something that has always, always surprised me. That once, once this was put into the how, uh, into the zoning in two thousand nine. I'm, I'm just so surprised that um, that, that we don't, you know, not good or bad, but just surprised that people. Have not taken advantage of this to, for something particularly like, say, for their in-laws. You know, to, to add to their property. But that, that said, um. You know, wh- when I go back to like, well, what's, you know, so what's the issue? What are we trying to solve? So if it's extra space, you know, we can, we can take a look at that. You know, ma- and maybe there's a way to do that, you know, within the existing by law.
Okay, that would be good. Michelle, I have a question for you, not to put you on the spot. Are you seeing anything in the market in general about these types of? Buildings or ho- house setups or anything like that or no? I mean, obviously you can't buy separately, but do you see a need for them or?
So you might see in some older homes that were built in the seventies, sixties even, and eighties, that they might have an in-law suite. Attached to it. Um, so you clearly don't see it in new construction. But, you know, something that, you know, we talk a lot about unintended consequences and. I think Bob might be like, well, how do you police this, right? You know, someone says, I, you know, by the way. You, you might want to look at most of Pine Haven is roughly around nine hundred square feet to a thousand. It's a pretty significant size, but so you, you put on something that's nine hundred square feet. I guess they apply for it because they have an in-law that's moving in with them. But for some reason, what happens if the in-law passes away? And then they start renting it out, you know, where you now creating like an apartment situation that's attached that. So it's, it's one of those situations where, you know, how do you police it on a yearly basis? And then also, when you talked about utilities, in most of these situations, utilities can be water, sewer, uh, electric, the meters. They almost have one attached to the house. Uh, if you're making two separates, you might even be now creating condos. You know, so it's, it can get complicated along the way as you start to develop it. Which um, I think it's a, a good idea. I don't know how much time we have for it.
Yeah.
And I don't know whether it's worthwhile just trying to look at possibly a waiver and then look at it long term for like another year to do it, to do it right. But it is something that has always been part of the zoning, and when we talked about the rezoning, this was part of it, that we were anticipating this would happen. I'm just not seeing it. Where I am seeing it is in older Colonials that were built in the seventies and eighties. That might have something that they created for an in-law to stay, and that would have been a bedroom, a bathroom, and maybe another small room.
Okay. Okay, well, that's good feedback. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions? Okay. Okay, so then moving on, um, the groundwater special permit, so that was just the problem I'm trying to solve for. Sorry guys. Okay, here we go. So, um, this was just because, um, I think it was a little different than, I think our language wasn't as explicit as it could be, and I think it causes confusion and, um, you know, a lot of runaround that makes it difficult for us as a board and the applicants as well. So, the only thing I really did hear, and again, we don't have to finalize the language, was I just wanted to um, clean it up so that it matched um, what the other special permits say for language, just uh, the one concern I, not concern, but I didn't want to change all the numbers, so I wondered if we could put it up at the very beginning, this start, this kicks off a jo- a long section about um issuing the special permit. So I was wondering if maybe we could stick it as a one to avoid all the number changes, in the event we move forward. I can't imagine we'd have to include the giant bylaw just to show number changes, will we have to re, should we, do we have to show that Kathy in a huge bylaw? We would, uh, what a pain. So, um, in any case, logistics aside, this is just language pulled from a, another section. Just to tighten this up a little bit. So I don't know if there are any comments or questions on this one. Oops, I can't see everybody. Um, and for anybody, um, I'm in the old book still. Yeah, but it is, um, the, the, if you're, if you happen to be in the yellow book, it's seven dash sixty-three. If you're looking at your book. And then fine, if there's no questions or comments on that. Um, finally, uh, this was one I didn't put anything in for here, it was just, um, Kathy, if, I don't expect you a time to do anything for it, but I, my, you're, you're looking at this one, right? The special permit, okay.
Yep.
So this was just the fix where we've, had the problem that we're solving for is two different boards are the SPGA for the same plan, which is confusing to everybody and may create acts or steps and ultimately could lead to even having conflicting conditions at some point, if one board has one condition, another board has a different one. Um, it's just a lot for everybody involved. I don't know if it's more expensive for the applicant as well to go to two different, is it more expensive as well?
Yeah, it's, yep, it's double, double the cost.
Okay, so I think tha- this was, um, you know, trying to make sure that we just make it easier for everybody and obviously we don't want someone to pay double the cost, um, if we can solve that here. So I don't know if there are any questions or comments on this one.
So Carrie, can you send this to me?
Oh yeah, sure, sure. Yeah, hi Bob.
I, I, I may be mistaken, um, but you're talking about special permit granting strategy shall be the planning board for duplex. Um, I think in the groundwater um bylaws, um, the requirement for special permit, special permit site plan approval was from both boards is not just under a duplex situation.
Do we have another situation like that?
That's, that's, that's my question.
Oh, I don't know.
Because if you've got, if you get a special permit with site plan, um, I, I'd have to, I'd have to read into it deeper.
Yeah, we, uh, Bob, I think it's gonna, it's sort of gonna be like a, a deconstructing a puzzle, I think, for us.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, which, which we'll do, like I said Carrie, we'll, we'll do in-house. And um, and have something, uh, you know, for the board for the sixteenth, but you know, f- from what I understand, I mean, it, you know, certainly makes sense staff-wise, but the, the goal is, is to, you know, is to have an applicant that's going for a special permit, that also has to go to groundwater and then therefore site plan, that they only have to go to one board, they do not have to do duplications, which is what happens right now. Um, so that's, that's the intent, correct?
Yeah, and it'd be interesting if there are any other, I can't think of any other cases, I don't know if any board members can think of any.
But we're, I think we're, what Bob might, might mean, I'm not putting words into your mouth Bob, but is that it, there's other places in the bylaw that we have to change.
Oh, I see, okay.
And then the, the, the section that I think you're talking about for groundwater Carrie is, is um, is oh seven, oh one oh, but I think it's four E, which talks about the special permit criteria that the groundwater committee goes by, there's three criteria.
Um, maybe, so I didn't catch it there. I, I thought it would be under, I, I followed, I tried to follow the logic of um, i- in other areas where it's just under the general procedures.
Because specifically in the, in the groundwater, and again, you know, we'll, we'll go into more detail with, when, when staff, when we get together to review this, but the, you know, specifically in the groundwater bylaw, which is on the bottom of page sixty-four of the, of the current book, which is um, w- with the blue page. Carrie, do you need a blue one?
No, I'm just having to migrate.
Okay. Um, well, you know, you just wait a, a few months and it'll change again. Um, but on the bottom of page sixty-four are the special permit criteria that the groundwater advisory committee go by. And there's three of them.
Okay, if there's a spot that makes better sense, I don't, that's what I'm finding out, again, the part, the intent is just to, to clarify. Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, then, um, commercial storage, is Amy, so I'll stop sharing.
Okay, so I'll start sharing. I might start with breweries, cause they're more fun. I don't know, it doesn't matter which one I start with, I guess. Let's see which one I have up that I can share. All right. This is the second. Did it come up? Okay, I want to see if I can pull up something else. So, just want to see. The reason why I was, went to commercial storage was because, you know, there's been a lot of talk about trucking and warehouses and our town can have more than just warehouses and trucking and, and I went through the bylaws last year and I looked where were some uses that we may want to take out. And commercial storage facility was one of them. And when I go through the community development plan, it talked about taking out those type of uses, and that was back in two thousand and three. So that's why I went and I, oh, here it is, I have it right on the page. Prohibit uses in the BA, BB West and B East that have to do with storage or warehousing facilities, freight train, terminals, numerous trucks, heavy machinery. So, I thought if we're ever gonna try to meet the goals of our community development plan, that we had to go back and take out some of the things that were recommended we take out. So, that's where I just pulled out commercial storage facility. And I think, um, Kathy mentioned she was gonna go through and she probably hasn't had time because even I ran out of time doing these and just sent them out yesterday. And um, to check with the assessors to see if we have any commercial storage facilities even in the town, I don't know if you had time Kathy or not. Yeah, I didn't, yeah.
I haven't yet Amy.
Okay, so I thought maybe we can look into this more on the sixteenth, once we, I actually have an assessors list too, and I considered going through it, but I ran out of time. So, but the summary was, I was just trying to follow the goals from the master plan and community development plan, and one of the, one of the things mentioned was to, to take these out. So, that's all I had to say about this.
So just, um, could you scroll to the use table for a second?
Oh, sure.
Okay, so you're saying no in-business west, but still in industrial and business south?
Yep. Yep, it just seems like downtown business, business east and business west are our main streets that we've always had the goal of actually making them more pedestrian friendly. And so, I was trying to take out the uses that go against making them pedestrian friendly.
Any comments or questions on this one? Okay, so basically it's removing the, is it just a change to the use table, but the definition's the same?
Yep, definition's the same, just a change to the use table.
I don't see any comments or questions, I can't see everyone at the same time, so just give a shout if I don't see you. Okay, no, doesn't look like any comments or questions. Okay, that was fast, do you want him going to contractors yard?
Sure, let me see what I have here.
I guess it doesn't matter, whatever you have open, I just wrote it down and it doesn't, you don't have to go in that order.
Okay. So here's a contractor yard. Um, I wanted to update the definition of a contractor's yard. I, I do go to, I do attend a lot of the ZBA meetings and, and we've been talking-
I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I still see commercial storage, are you showing a different one?
Uh, I am, but I, maybe I have to stop share and then reshare. So maybe that's how I have to do it, I'll stop share and then reshare the new one. I figured if I changed it on my end, you guys would just see it pop up. Let me see, okay. Here we go, do you see that now?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, I wanted to update the definition of a contractor's yard. A couple times at the ZBA meeting recently, we discussed contractor's yard as being vague and it's been used as a catch-all for numerous uses. So, on the sheet I emailed out, I actually um, had looked for a state definition or in the dictionary, but they didn't have contractor's yards listed. So I did find definitions in Ashland, Grafton and Clinton, and I based one off of that. But really what I did was I took our contractor's yard, which is what they had, and I took out things that we already have allowed in different uses, like our contractor's yard used to include, well, it does now, lumberyard, um, things for sale at resale or wholesale. And those are already listed in business west under like greenhouse and wholesale trade and sale of grain, lumber or construction, so we already have those things listed in other definitions. I just tried to make the contractor's yard simpler, so it was just a contractor's yard. Um, a premise used by a building contractor or subcontractor for the storage of their vehicles, equipment, supplies and fabrication of sub-assemblies. That's what I added, what I added is what I underlined, and then the next part is already in our definition. And I also added, all outside storage shall be screened from view from the street and abutting properties and storage of salvage materials is prohibited. Because we did have a little clause about salvage materials in ours and I had to fit it in. And I have noticed even at the ZBA meeting last week, the conditions are, it should be screened from view, and I want to think I read that in our bylaw somewhere else. So, so I guess my summary and purpose of it was just to clean up the contractor's yard and take out the other uses in the contractor's yard that actually follow in these different definitions.
Okay.
Be easier if everybody just reads what I emailed out and then we talk about it on the sixteenth, or it's totally up to you, if you want to talk about it now, or if anyone has comments.
Yep, any comments or questions?
I, I just wanted some clarification, so I've read everything. So, on your page, where C is, that's our current definition.
Yep.
You're proposing, um, the paragraph above it, uh, where you've underlined is your, your interpretation of what should be added into it. Plus you took other things out that you didn't like in there and you thought should, are duplicated, correct?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
You're right.
I've got a question.
Sure.
Um, and I, and I'm asking this only because in the recent few years that I've been here, there's been a, a, a lot of interest in uh, landscapers, in where are they gonna park and where are they gonna put their stuff? Um, would a landscaper fall under a contractor's yard with your new def- definition?
Um, I, well, I don't know, we could add it in. They're considered a, well, they're not a building contractor or subcontractor. I guess we could talk about that as a board, cause some towns I did look at had different definitions for landscaping yards and some of them included them in the contractor's yard. So, but that's a good thing to, to talk about.
I mean, I, I, I guess my intent is that, you know, it's, I guess they have to go someplace in town. And if you're gonna take it out of a contractor's yard, which is where we've been kind of pigeonholing them for a while, um, if, if the intent is to take um, landscapers and lawn maintenance out of the contractor's yard, where do we fit them?
Yeah, well, they, they actually were never listed in the old definition either. So.
Right, but, but as, but as I said in my email the other day, is that when we get a proposed use, we have to try to find a way to pigeonhole it somewhere. Okay, and, and, and like, like we've all discussed before, contractor's yard at times is kind of a, a kind of a catch-all, um, because of its, it, because of its vagueness.
Yeah. Amy, could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Not to go forward to the next one, but on your next one where you have used variances and prohibited uses, you listed as landscaping business, is it, are you thinking that you want to ban landscaping businesses in town?
No.
Sort of goes with what Bob is saying, because it-
No, that was, actually wasn't, I was going forward, I, I, I s- attached a list from other towns, but I thought we should go through them and decide. I didn't, I wasn't gonna take out landscaping or contractor's yard. Those are further down in the list, like another town went to letter L and stopped there, and I was gonna talk about that, but as, that is the next one I was gonna talk about.
Yeah, cause I did notice on, um, uh, so after R, as much to what Bob was saying, where you could use C, D and E, all those seem to be the, you know, the commercial greenhouse, wholesale trade and seal of grain. Those all seem to tie into the seal of something, not necessarily as service related. So I think what Bob is trying to say is, what do you do this segment of the population that is providing a service to your community, and yet you don't have a place for them in your bylaw?
Right, that's what actually I was taking out of our definition with the sales. Because it's already included in others and the lumberyard, so I guess I always thought contractor's yard was a landscaping yard, I mean, you could put contractor's yard slash landscape yard. I, I wasn't trying to take landscapers out, they were actually never in.
So Amy, something you just said, um, is you, you took out the sales. Um, so, so for your definition of contractor's yard, you, you are proposing that it's only for storage, they can't conduct business, they, they can't operate their business- They they can't operate their business out of the contractor's yard and they can't do retail sales or wholesale sales?
Right. I mean, I looked at all the people who had definitions and it wasn't sales. It was like what they did now on fifty southwest cutoff. It was a place. For the building contractor or subcontractor to store their vehicles, equipment, supplies. And I'm assuming fabrication of sub assemblies means if you're a builder, you might put together. Or mantle and then you bring it to the site and then install it. I'm not sure what fabrication of some assemblies is.
But what what's what's the issue with allowing people to run their business? And and to have sales?
Well, as a contractor, do they sell things? I'm talking about sales like, like the con, building contractors I know. Don't sell anything. At their business, like they sell, they say, okay, we're gonna install a kitchen or. Or we're gonna install a paved paved. Walkway, but we don't sell. The pavers and we don't sell cabinets. That would be like retail sales or. I didn't find actually.
The contractor's yards, I mean, that that we have in town. You know, absolutely sell things. Um, I mean, we just, uh, you know, as the, as the, the most. Sort of example to me in the forefront is, you know, Del Greco was a contractor's yard and they sold. You know, masonry supplies as to retail and wholesale. Um, Zeko's, um. Uh, yard with all of their mulch and stone and, you know, they they sell retail and. Um. Wholesale. I'm ju, I'm just trying to figure out what what's the issue with allowing someone to operate their business?
Um, well, I thought sale of grain, lumber, construction supplies is what the sale is. I don't think, I don't agree that Del Greco was a contractor's yard, as you know, because I do think they were retail sales. I. I went there.
They did, they did. Yeah, they absolutely had retail sales.
Right, but they weren't a contractor. They were retail sales.
Again, you, I mean, that's what you think, but or that that's your opinion, but, um.
Right up to one in the Better Business Bureau and it said they were a sale. Of masonry supplies. They weren't a contractor that installed them because. I bought my bricks there and I asked, I said, can you install my sidewalk? And they said, no, we don't do that. We just sell the product.
Yep.
Just like the granite company at three twenty-nine, um. We were told that's retail sales because they're selling granite and they're installing it in someone's house. But they weren't, they were called retail sales and Del Greco was retail sales too. But.
Well, no, I mean, again, that's, you know, I'm. I I don't want to keep talking about Del Greco because it's. I I just don't want to keep talking about it. But I just don't understand what is the problem with. Sales with with a contractor being able to run his business. Out of a contractor's yard. I that, I'm just trying to figure that out.
What type of sales do contractors do? Like contractors do installations.
That, well, they sell their services. They they want to run their business.
Well, there's a, there's a kitchen remodeling, uh, kitchen company. They sell cabinets and they also install them. I think they're right on Main Street, um. Down across from the White Cliffs. The Arsenal's uh, business, I think it's New England kitchens or something like that. That's a similar one where they would have wares and they would have display and they would also do installation countertops, whether they're granite or not. Um, and kitchen cabinets and to go back to Del Greco, um. I think that the, the, the Del Greco. Premises falls under a contractor's yard just as much as any lumberyard would, which was the first thing that was listed because it was. Materials that they sold. At same as a lumberyard, it's just instead of wood, it was bricks. And that's how that part made that that use made sense to me.
I guess when I looked at the definitions online and when I looked at the other towns. A contractor's yard. Was a premise by building contractor or subcontractor for storage of their vehicles. You know, none of them told, talked about sales. And it seemed like we had three other definitions for sales. For the same type of products. So you wouldn't picture the the retail, you wouldn't say the kitchen supply person was a retail sale like. Is a.
I guess you'd have to ask Bob. I mean, th- they they do sales, but. They sell cabinets and they sell cabinets and install cabinets. They might, they might sell them to somebody else to install them or they might install them. As their own contract, you know, kind of like Home Depot has contractors on. On a list that you can hire to install a door or garage door or whatever, whatever the other piece that they sell. Still. Could be considered a contractor's yard. The other, the other thing with your approach to looking at some of the other towns is you don't know if the other town has something. It may not be a contractor's yard, but maybe some other definition that's their catchall. That that covers the things that you're not covered in contractor's yard here. There may be something else you have to. I would assume you have to read through their whole bylaw to look and see if there's something else that they use as a catchall to. To put things in that are. Don't necessarily perfectly meet the definition of something that's in their bylaw. And in our case, it happens to be contractor's yard that covers a wide variety of things.
So I have a question for you, Bob, actually. When, Amy, if you scroll down for a second. So the, these are in our bylaws right now, like the sale, what does that belong to? The sale of grain, lumber or construction? Is that in there now?
Yep.
Okay. So. Bob, if somebody didn't have, so we also, so say here's the sale of lumber, but then above in the other description, it was. Amy, if you scroll up for a second.
Yep.
It was lumberyard. Do you make a distinction in your mind between the two? I guess, how would you be selling lumber without being a lumberyard? I don't know. How do you make a distinction? I'm trying to parse it out myself.
Well. I think you have to come back to contractor's yard and whether or not. Sales actually occur there and I I I would suggest that it does when I was a contractor. If I wasn't out doing a job for somebody, I was trying, I was, I was selling. My services and all that comes with it, including fabrication of sub assemblies. I had to have a place to store my tools and equipment. Um, you know, having an office where somebody could come and and visit me and, um. You know, talk about options and designs and and. Materials and whatnot. Um, I think that's a huge part of a contractor's yard and I was a carpentry specializing in, um. Residential. But you could make the same argument for a landscape architect. You can make the same ar- argument for. Uh, a hardscape, um, contractor. You know, it's it's kind of, you know, and anytime you have. You know, a a trade specifically that has trucks, vehicles and equipment and they are always selling. Uh, their service, okay, the whole thing goes out as one bundle. So, you know, the 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 ability for a contractor's yard. To sell the service in addition to wholesale or retail materials. I I think kind of goes hand in hand. Um, you know, a lumberyard by itself. Or a home center by itself, like a Lowe's or, you know, or Berlin lumber, if you remember back in those days. Um, you know, those are standalone retail slash hotel wholesale establishments. And again, a lot of those other places like the lumberyards, um, they do, um, some fabrication. They do custom millwork. They do. Um, custom moldings. Um, and they may actually have some contractors that they can hire out. Specifically, um, as an employee of the lumberyard to go to to go perform the service.
Okay. Okay, so we gotta, we want to move on because we need to get through. I'm targeting nine o'clock to end, so. Are there any other questions from the board on this one? Okay, so Amy, will you actually just re- restate your, the initial problem that we're solving for for this one? Maybe we don't have the exact language right, or maybe we haven't picked the right components, but the original, oh, is it right up there? So the original.
And and when I listen to the ZBA meetings, I've talked to someone else too, like. They just said it's a vague definition. It's catchall and and it should be tightened up. And that's what I was trying to do.
Okay, okay, so why don't we move forward? Wish. Now I have used variance prohibitive uses on my list. Is that, is that handy for you?
Um, let me see. And share. No, I got the brewery. I gotta find where that other one is. Yes, but the brewery I've talked about in the past and really what I just want to do is add a definition to our. You know, instead of taking things out, let's add some things back in. And, um, a lot of towns now. Use warehouses repurposed to have breweries and. And in their business west or not business west, in their business zones, they have. Breweries. I just wanted to add. It to our definitions and added somewhere in our zones. So they were allowed, so if somebody wanted to come in, it wouldn't, they wouldn't have to jump through a lot of hoops. I was just thinking of something to add.
Are you looking to specify just breweries or does that include the distilleries? I think originally it did.
Um, the definitions do, but I I just threw this on here for talk with the whole board, what what everybody felt. I mean, I'm not against them. I don't know if anybody else is. There are different companies around the state now that have different like fun places that make like fruit. Vodkas or, and that would probably be the distillery, right?
Yep.
Yep, I don't know, just just trying to add something.
Yeah, I think if the intent, I think if the intent was to, for brewery, I think any, you know, I think. Distillery or winery would fit within that same category would make sense. And I think it does make sense to make it inviting for these type of businesses to come to town and not have to jump through hoops, as you said.
You 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 might also want to consider, um, um, uh, coffee roasters. We've got a couple in town. Um. But if you want to talk about, you know. Craft, craft style products. That are consumable. Um, you know, brewery. You know, uh, distilleries, wineries. Coffee roasters. You know, other manufacturers. We actually have a, um. Uh, a retail olive oil. Um, uh, store in town. That they don't make the olive oil there. They probably make it someplace else and bring it to Northborough to sell. But if they wanted to be able to do that, you know, I mean. It, I I realize it's kind of piling on to what you were originally intending, but you know, if you want to open it up. Um, you know.
Yeah, I'm opening up to all of them. Anything fun?
Yeah.
Can you think of how to add it in, Bob? I just, I just took these definitions from, um. I found Framingham and Medway actually had similar ones and Grafton has. A different way of doing it, but maybe you could go through and see what you think.
I mean, it probably what you'd have to do is start with a list of definitions and and good solid descriptions. And then figure out what zoning districts where you'd like to see this happen. And then, you know, amend the, um, or add this category. Uh, into into the use charts.
Yep.
You know, but I think the key is getting the description in the, in the, um. Uh, um. Definitions, uh, accurate.
Yep.
You know, one, one of the other things, I mean, again, with all of these, you know, we will take a look at. Um, or we'll start to take a look at, you know, where. Where something may already exist in the bylaw that just needs to be revised or amended. Um, something like, like a brewery, you know. I immediately think of the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen also. Um, because it's all about, you know, liquor licenses and pouring licenses. Um, you know, I know that there aren't any available in town, but right now, um, and then we have to look at, you know, what. Um, you know, there's, there's just other, um, when we're introducing something this, this, um. Could be this significant, you know, we need to talk about DPW, about water usage. Um, I have no idea, um, about. You know, water usage, but these are just other, other departments that we need to bring in, bring into the discussion.
So I have a question. I don't know if you know the answer. Do the Board of Selectmen give a number of licenses set by the state? Or is it, is it a formula set by the state where you get a certain number or is the Board of Selectmen have the authority to dictate the number of licenses they can give?
It, um, it's actually sort of a combination, Carrie. It's, it's definitely by, done by population. Um, and you know, so each town is is provided X amount of. Um, pouring licenses, X amount of sale licenses. And then, um, in the case of Northborough Crossing, uh, we were. The town was already at its peak as far as how many licenses, you know, that the town had and they were all issued. So that, uh, particular applicant, um. Uh, petitioned the state to add more liquor licenses. Uh, to become available in the town of Northborough and the selectman had to be in agreement with that. And then it was, uh, uh, I believe an actual like bill that had to be filed in order to increase the. Number of liquor licenses, both at the state level and at town meeting. So there, it it's a, it's a process to add additional licenses.
Just have a quick question and we can read it, but with the brewery, distillery, winery, tasting room, it says a farmer series pouring license. Is it's a Massachusetts issued. Is that different, I wonder, like, because this talks about production. And a tasting room where they have samples and they can host events, but it says. The facility may only sell beverages produced by them. And so permitted beverages to consumers for consumption off the brewery premises. So I'm wondering. This part of it, which is the second definition is what I see normally allowed in industrial zones. It seems like where they're producing it and they just have tasting rooms. I'm wondering if the. Uh, Massachusetts issued farmer series pouring license is different than like a liquor license. I don't know.
I have absolutely no idea.
I I don't know, and that may have come from. An issue that came up. Um, within the Shoba Valley Winery, I think.
Yeah.
Something about they brew the grapes on site and they made the wine on site, but they couldn't pour it or something like that. I don't remember the, the exact issue of the case.
Yeah.
But I I remember the state legislature had to come up with a solution in a hurry. Um, to get this thing settled because Neshoba is not the only winery in the state.
I I I think there was also something out in Western Mass about a brew, a brewery. Hard word to say, uh, for me, um, but, um, something about that they. Um, they were trying to come under like an agricultural exemption. It was a way to use. Farmland that was no longer being farmed and and the, the town was trying to encourage. The, you know, um, that use and, uh, instead of housing. And the, there, uh, there was an issue about whether it could be classified as agricultural or not because were they growing? You know, the hops and the barley and, you know, were they actually growing it there and then, you know, converting it into, or, you know, making it into beer? So there's, you know, again, it's, there's, there's just other people that we need to involve, um, if if we're gonna pursue this. And that's fine, I mean, that's.
Yep. I wonder if there's like another town too, like you could ask if you know, like someone in Marlboro or Framingham. Or Westboro, they, they have Cold Harbor Brewing, like. You know, if they know, have any of the answers.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, um. What do you have next available?
Let's see. You never know. Say, let's see if I can find. Nonconforming. Say, let's see if I can find nonconforming here. Oh, here it is, I didn't do, oh no, I don't wanna, I wanna do that one last, cuz that's kind of the hardest. Let's see, I think I have to open. Let me just, I can only open so many, I'll be quick. Experience, right? Okay, it says it's open, so let's see if I can find it on the share screen. Here it is. Okay. Can you see that? Okay. Let's see. There were, um. Well, I went to a class on economic development in like a downtown. And they talked about loopholes being use variances and others and. And they recommended if you really do want your downtown to. Evolve the way you wanna do it, you should get rid of use variances and the loopholes. And. So I was thinking about you, removing use variances. But I know that's a biggie, cuz we talked about it's a biggie, so then I thought if we weren't gonna go for use variances. Maybe we should do what some of the other towns have done, which is there's a section. Where you have items or uses that are express, expressively expressly prohibited. So. This is a list and this is a one Michelle was talking about. And I go down the list and this is I think from Framingham and Medway has one and there was another town that had one. And, I mean, we never are gonna want slaughtering or any of these. Uh, cement factory, fertilizer factories, glue, petroleum. But since we have a use variance, anyone could ask for it. Which means it would take time out of staff and boards and. The applicant himself, who, eh, as we say, it's expensive to apply for these things. So if your surrounding towns aren't allowing asphalt plants, do we really want that to be? A consideration in Northborough. So I thought instead of doing the use variance and, and getting rid of the use variance, maybe. We do what these towns did and just. Go down the list of these uses and we can add it to our bylaw too. And I'm not saying that we do all of these, I thought we could go through them, cuz I know like. You know, like Michelle said, maybe we don't wanna do landscaping businesses or contractor yards. We can still allow those in our town, so we don't have to use this list, I was just using it as an example. So. I guess, I don't know.
Any comments or questions or thoughts on one versus the other?
You just never know unintended consequences, you think about SA Farms. And he came in and he actually said he was gonna be a slaughtering and then, I don't know, I just, he's for, he's, his, his. Land is for sale now and you just never know. So these I thought. We could consider prohibiting in town if we're not gonna get rid of the use variance, at least.
So, question for you, um, in the towns that had these prohibited uses. Do they also have a use variance or this was in lieu of the use variance?
No, they must have had a use variance because it, no use variance shall be granted for any prohibited use and Medway did the. Same and Medway was actually the town that was talked about in the economic dev- de- development in the downtown. They were. Used as an example and they were in, so that's why I looked at their bylaw. And Framingham too, because they just redid all their bylaws. I don't know, I just. You know, I guess I hear a lot of complaints. And I just wanna make sure. Nothing else comes in.
Does um, so any board members have thoughts on one over the other or comments or questions?
Uh, I just had a question on the list, um. As, since this is Amy's bylaw that she wants to submit. Hugh has automobile storage. Um, you see quite a few of them because we just happen to be a neighboring community that a butts route nine that has several. Um, automobile sale places that store their um automobiles offsite. Um, are you saying that that should no longer exist?
No, I just used it as an example, I thought if, I wanted to talk about whether you wanted. To discuss the use variance or the prohibited uses and if people were inclined to go forward with the prohibited uses. I thought we could go down and talk about them and if there were some like. Vehicle storage yard that you thought we should leave on there, then that wouldn't be on the list.
Okay, all right.
Like, I know in town, we don't allow self-storage anymore, so Medway actually went. Down the list and included most of them, but then they stopped at like. L or M and they included self-storage and a couple others. Say they included self-storage and bulk storage, they, they had those as prohibited uses. And I know we already prohibit self-storage, so we could add that to the list. You know, anything we, we prohibit in town and if you can think of something that's not on this list that you say, you know what? You know, we don't need that in Northborough. And it, and it is totally up to our town, when I talk to CMRPC, they're like, as a town, you decide what. What do you want to see in your town, what use do you want? I mean, none of these have to be allowed per state regulation, except for the ones that have to be allowed.
So, the one thing that the prohibited uses doesn't solve for. Is back to your comment about the, the um downtown zoning, so. You ever want something to look a certain way, for as long as you have a use variance, like you could. You could swap in and then you could put in industrial use down there, right, with a use variance, you could. So it doesn't solve for that necessarily, however. I, I do think that we would, we may need more lead time with education on why. We would want that and what that means, because I think it may be perceived as. I don't know, I, it doesn't sound like it went over well before and I wonder why that is. I don't know if someone who's on the board before, like, is there a reason it didn't go over well the first time?
I think Michelle, it was the same year as that gun. There was a gun person with the gun range and everything that year, including the marijuana and the solar, everything was rejected.
I, I think the, um, we can certainly double check this, but I think the use variances. Trying to prohibit them has gone twice to town meeting and, and failed both times, if, if I remember correctly.
You know why Kathy, was it just like not understanding it or not wanting it or?
No, I, I, I think the, the second time and I mean, I can certainly go through my notes. But I remember mo- the, the most recent time um, was uh, people just wanting the, the flexibility. You know, of being able to do, you, you know, something that they perhaps hadn't thought of yet with their property. Um, and, and as opposed to, you know, um. Being limited by the use table, that sort of sounds like an oxymoron, but um, uh, but. Uh, I, so I think, I think there, there was a lot of conversation about that, um, people not wanting to be. Limited with what they could do with their property, you know, you get into property rights and it's, it gets tricky.
Okay, all right, well, I wanna make sure we have enough time to cover the last one, so any other comments or questions on this one? Okay, all right, so we have one left, nonconforming.
Okay, here we go, gotta find it, I have so many files open. Okay, I think this is it. I even put notes down the side of mine. Okay. So. Nonconforming use, there's a class, everybody, in December and we. You should all take it, because nonconforming use is very tricky, but it's a really good class. And um, I think it's important to take, especially anyone on the planning board or ZBA. But, okay, there were a couple of things for nonconforming use, I wanted to add the intent and purpose. Because I saw that with other towns, that the intent of the bylaw is to ensure that nonconforming uses. Will ultimately comply with the use requirements of the zoning bylaw. And then. I had two things I was thinking of, either update the bylaw, so if it changes or expands, it actually. Triggers the nonconforming use bylaw, or consider not allowing changes or expansions. Um, according to this CPTC packet, which was from a class that I took. Which um, I, I attached in the email that was sent out. That per mass general law, a local government may prohibit the change or extension of a pre-existing nonconforming structure. And essentially freezes structures and uses. Um. That's what I would consider, because I don't know, and maybe Kathy or Bob have a, a better example, but. When nonconforming seems to come in front of the board, it's never. To go towards conforming, it's always used to expand. The very first case I was on, when I started the planning board. It was a nonconforming lot behind Trinity Church where there was no. House on it, but maybe there was at one point, so they considered it nonconforming and it was five thousand square feet. And instead of building one house on it, they wanted to do four. Because now it's nonconforming, so now we can ask for whatever we want and that's what I feel like. Ever since I've been involved with the planning board, it's like even before with um, the golf course, that. A lot of people who come before the board with nonconforming are trying to go in a totally different direction. And it's usually not to try to conform with our bylaws and this was another loophole that was talked about in the. Class I took. So. What I wanted to do with our nonconforming. Is to try to. At least trigger it to go in front of the ZBA, so they could decide with a special permit if the expansion. Extension or change was. Was more detrimental to the neighborhoods or butters, but if not. We could even ask town council or CMRPC how to freeze it, I saw an example in Southborough. Nonconforming structures or uses shall not be extended or altered, except to make them conforming. But then they did add that with a special permit, you could do other things, but I was thinking for an example, we could. Say no on conforming uses or structures shall not be extended or altered, except to make them conforming. If we wanted to go down that, I don't know how other people feel.
Okay, so is this, um, the actual bylaw, it's changing the definition and putting in a special permit?
Um, yeah, and I think I have some questions I'd like to ask town council, because. Would the special permit required in the nonconforming? It says the zoning board of appeals may grant a special permit to change. I added this, a nonconform, but I, I won't say it, a nonconforming use in accordance with this section. Only if it determines that a change or extension is similar or less detrimental, I guess I wanted to ask town council is. If it's an extension, does that trigger a special permit? What I wanted to do was, was tighten up the nonconforming to nonconforming use. It's very tricky, so maybe it'd be better that people read.
I was just gonna say, Amy, you just took the words right out of my mouth when you said it was very tricky. Um, if, if the board um, is, is going to go down. A, a, a path of doing anything with this, the nonconforming section. Um, it, it took the attorney general's office six months last year to try to figure out what. The town of Northborough was trying to do with the zoning bylaw that was approved. And um, and they went back and forth and back and forth with myself and town council. In trying to figure out what was really intended by what was approved at town meeting. So, so if we're gonna go down this path again, um, we, we need to figure out what it is that you want to do. And then we need to get town council involved.
Right.
Um, and it, and it can't just be these random questions to town council about. You know, what do you think, what do you think about nonconforming or, you know, we, we need, we need to propose. We need to propose something for, to get their input and, and advice on.
I mean, I wanna ask how we could update this bylaw so it would trigger, like, like. If it's nonconforming to nonconforming use and they wanna either change the use or expand the use. Um, I wanted to trigger at least a special permit by the ZBA.
Okay, and, and the problem we're sol- trying to solve for.
Is because, um, like I mentioned, um, in our town. Uh, if there's a nonconforming use, a lot of creative people come in and try to use it as a springboard. To either expand really in a large way or. Change the use altogether, so instead of allowing one house, now you can allow four, because it's a nonconforming smaller lot. Where maybe we make it easy by now saying, if you're a nonconforming use. Um, you can only. Change if you're gonna come, conforming.
Okay, any comments or questions?
And this is probably one that, since it was just emailed out today, it's probably better for people to read and we talk about it at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but which sections are actually changing?
I put the whole, this is the very first part of the bylaw, seven oh eight oh one oh.
And underline is in addition?
Yep, underline is in addition and the strikeout is the cross out. And this I changed if we wanted to include. Extensions. Or expansions, I don't know, extensions and expansions of uses. Like, cuz at the meeting last week at the ZBA, I, I, I did ask Kathy, how come? This is, the nonconforming use wasn't triggered between Del Greco and the new use. And she said because the use didn't change. But the use did greatly expand, so according to the bylaws, we can. Have the bylaw triggered if it expands and I'm just curious, and that's what I would like to ask town council. Is why it wasn't triggered, like, did this or extension not trigger it? And it, and I started this way before that, so it's this, this isn't because of the decision last week, this is. Something that's been, been, I've been thinking about since the last.
If you just scroll down for a second, so the, the parts that are changing, is it only that, so if you scroll down, I can't see.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, so um, A is changing, but is B just the same? Okay.
It's the same, I just left it there in case someone wanted to talk about it.
Okay, and then the next part, the um, seven eight oh two oh, that, there are changes here as well?
Yep, the underlines are the changes.
Okay, and highlight is?
Because I had a comment on the side.
Oh, got it, okay, that makes sense, and then um, B is changing.
Yep.
Okay, and then um, the next section down, if you keep scrolling.
This, I, I just had a. Comment, when would this ever be triggered, so if we do have town council, I had some questions. Like this talks about a variance being required if you do reconstruction. Yet in seven oh eight oh six oh, you can do reconstruction without a variance, so. I don't know.
So it doesn't change, these sections aren't changing, you, you just.
Yep, I just had them highlighted while we're, while we're going through the whole definition, like they all connect together. So like how Kathy Bobbitt said, you know, it has a way. So like how Kathy and Bob had said, you know, it has a wave effect. I just wanted to put the majority of the section in there that this could affect.
Okay, any comments or questions? Okay. All right, is there, is that it? Is that the end? Is there another one?
Um, no, that's it, but I was wondering, you know, since time is of the essence and February is our drop dead date. Oh, maybe I guess we can put together questions for town council for the next meeting. Or should, could he attend at the very beginning, so we could ask some questions? I guess.
I, I think you, I mean, the, you know, the, the, to me, the best use of his time would be, you need to figure out what zoning amendments, you know, you're gonna propose for town meeting. Um, and then, and then we can concentrate on, on those. I mean, I don't know if you're planning on going with all of this?
Well, let's go back to, I want to take a straw poll, like go, go back to the beginning. So to see what we actually want to move forward with, and then we'll at least have a sense of what the board wants to move forward with, or at least make it to the next, the next, at least it passes this initial scan.
I mean, would it be helpful, Carrie, if, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm gonna, you know, get together with, you know, with at a minimum, you know, Bob and I to go over all of these, I mean, would it be helpful for you to have, you know, our, our information and, and thoughts on this first before you decide which ones you want to go forward with?
Oh, yeah, that actually would be helpful, but I didn't want to make you do work on stuff if we weren't gonna go forward with them. Uh, from my, from what I'm hearing about the discussion, the only one that's really dropped is, would be the signs. Unless anybody.
Carrie?
Yes.
My recommendation is to not take a vote because there's just too much data that's missing.
Okay.
And you need to hear back from staff, right?
Yeah, I just didn't want.
Hear back from staff like next week. At least they can say to like Millie, um, you know, maybe we can't do it this year, but here's what you want to look for twenty twenty-two, right?
Yep.
Um, and then, or maybe they say, um, Anthony, this is what we think and the impact will be this. And uh, likewise with yours, if there's no impact and it's very straightforward, then you go with it. If they think that, you know, cause always when you're doing zoning, and we haven't talked about this tonight, you always want to really go out and somehow check with your stakeholders. And say, you know, how is this going to affect you? Um, and one of them might be like, um, Kathy or Bob recommended where, when it comes to the liquor licenses, you check with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health. You know, do you have any issues with the, you know, the, the craft, the craft beer or do you just enhance another bylaw and add it in? So I think it's better to let staff go through with this for two weeks and then come back. And then you'll have a better sense of what to move forward, what has priority.
Sure, that sounds good. I just didn't want to make staff do extra work. If there were ones we knew right up front, weren't gonna make the cut. Anthony?
So it's for Amy, I guess, so, and, and maybe I didn't understand this component of it, but I saw, so you were tightening up contractors' yards of definitions in one. And then I saw them being prohibited in another. Did I misunderstand that or was that just two options?
Yeah, well, that was, um, I definitely want to tighten up contractors' yard definition, but then we have a list of prohibited uses. And when we go down that, we can decide which ones to prohibit. But it sounds like, you know, with it Bob and Michelle and people's input, we're not gonna prohibit contractors' yards. So I'm not expecting to prohibit contractors' yards. That, that list for the uses was just an example of lists. And we can go down them, but I don't expect to prohibit contractors' yards in town unless people want to vote on the uses today, different uses.
Okay, thanks, that clarifies it.
And I do think with, um, what Bob said about landscaper yard, if we do do a definition about contractors' yard, we have to decide, do you want to include landscaper yard, contractor yard is like the same definition? Or are there two different notions for landscaper yard and a different one for contractor yard? Because I have seen it both ways in different towns.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like, um, Anthony, I know I promised you a straw pole, but it, but does that sound like a good thing to you if we let?
Yeah, let's, let's hold off until next time.
Okay, great, so I think that's a good recommendation. Um, and I, I, I would say it's safe to not look at signs, Anthony, you withdrew it and it doesn't sound like anybody really wanted to pursue in his place, so um, I think that one can safely be off the, the docket.
And, and I think that, um, having a lot more to do with the sober houses, I think I would take that one off as well.
Okay. For sober houses, do, so maybe it's not a rush for this case, but Bob or Kathy, is there any value in like figuring out how it should be on our radar? Like, is this something we should put on the radar for next year? Or are we not even close, I, I'm not next year's town meeting, but so that we don't lose sight of it? Do we need to bookmark it in any way or it's already on your radar? We don't need to worry about it?
Well, I, it, in, in terms of sober houses, I have to be honest with you, it's already on my radar because I'm scared for the twelve guys that are in that house right now.
Mm-hmm, okay. But you don't need the planning board to do it, that's a building code thing, not a zoning. Okay.
Right, and, and like I said earlier, once, once the building code gets their hands around it, um, in terms of how to deal with it, that might have an effect on how the zoning code can be changed, remended or, or, or worked to, to help deal with it. Um, because the, the two kind of echo back and forth with each other at times.
Okay.
It, it basically, like I said before, it's, it's too, it's, it's too, it's, it's too far into the infancy to figure it out.
Okay, so Millie, you are withdrawing that as a potential bylaw for this year?
Yeah, I think I'd like to, um, do a lot more work on it than.
Okay. Um, thank you for bringing it up, though. I think it's a good thing that I didn't, it didn't even occur to me, so thank you for putting that on the radar. Well, it was already, Bob was already thinking of it, but anyway. Okay, so that leaves, um, nine. Is that okay with staff to take a look at that over the next two weeks and weigh in on the sixteenth?
Yep.
Okay, are you going, will you be weighing in on my tiny house on wheels?
I like that.
It, it's a trailer.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, great, so thank you, everybody. Um, I, I am still targeting that we wrap up in the next few minutes, so unless there are any, um, any A and R's lot releases or bonds?
No. Nope, none.
Any, um, important subcommittee updates? Okay, for me? Um, ZBA, wait a minute, I'm on the wrong agenda, I'm sorry, everybody.
Good, do you think there's gonna be a groundwater meeting? Just curious.
Uh, no, I don't expect there to be one until January, maybe.
Okay. It's good to know. And, and is that?
ZBA is not meeting and I don't believe you have any applications that require groundwater, uh, recommendation yet.
Okay. Okay, so the next ZBA meeting is January twenty-sixth. Next planning board means the sixteenth. We, do we need to settle on twenty twenty-one schedule or?
Um, I, I would, if you could, Carrie, maybe just two or three months out, I mean, unless people have, you know, again, it's usually all about vacation schedules, but, um, you know, there are a couple applicants that are asking for, um, you know, when you're gonna be meeting in January and February, so they can plan on a filing. Um, but date wise, if you, if you, you know, continue with the first and the third, it would be January fifth and nineteenth, February second and sixteenth, and March second and sixteenth. So, you know, if you just, if people are able to, you know, agree with that at, at this point, it's just something that I can, you know, you know, the information that I can have to give out to people.
Okay, does that seem okay to everyone? We don't have a choice really, because that's when our license is available, for Zoom?
Um, I'm sorry, say that again?
All right, um, for Zoom, do we even have much of a choice based on the nights we're assigned for the license?
Um, no, that, no, but it was just a nice way of.
All right, so Kathleen, Kathy, nice to give us that next month of dates. Are there any issues? It looks like one of them is February vacation week. But are there any issues for anybody?
No, do we, was there, are we changing the start time?
Six thirty, right?
Okay. Okay.
For the next meeting or in January?
For starting the next meeting is six thirty.
Okay.
So you, so you got a three hour meeting, that, I mean, that's your, your max?
That's it. Um, okay, so it doesn't look like anybody has any issues with those dates?
I had a question, but not about the dates.
Sure.
I wanted to talk about the minutes and I work with Melanie on some other boards and how she does the minutes and I think that she could use some direction on whether you want them more detailed or less detailed. It seemed like we spent a lot of time tonight, tonight discussing, um, discussion that we had regarding fifty Southwest cutoff that wasn't even a public hearing between the board and the decision that needed to be made, so. Just, if you could just help clarify for her a little bit how much detail you want, so she has a good idea going forward. Cause I know it's frustrating for her to take stuff out and then have it put in and not put in enough and have you add more and just looking for a little direction on that for her.
I know, that's a good point. We've been torturing the person who writes the minutes for years now, so don't, don't take it, don't take it personally, Melanie, we've tortured many. Um, I don't know, board, how do you feel about it?
Well, it, I'm sorry, can I just pipe in here? Um, it, it, your, your last meeting, or no, two meetings ago, I think it was, you know, you, we talked about doing less. So that's, that's the direction that Melanie, you know, that, that, I mean, she listens to these meetings and then that, that we talked about in-house. So, you know, the, the two November meetings and, um, the October twentieth meeting, you know, are, are less than, um, you know, i- if anyone has taken a look at those, um, you know, they're more compact and, um, they're still just as timely for her to, to write, well, a little less timely, but because what she does is, you know, kind of has to study it a little bit more to get it narrowed down a little better. Um, but, uh, but we're, you know, she's, she's getting the swing of the, of the, of the less.
Mm-hmm.
So, so maybe, you know, if at your next meeting, um, if you're gonna look at those other three sets and then plus you'll have tonight's meeting, um, you know, then you can talk about i- if you're okay with the, with the new format.
Okay.
I just had a comment too, is I, I think every meeting is different, like I think it's, some of them are easier to sum up, but even the next, like the ten twenty was a decision of Bartlett Street, which is a long meeting and, and there may be some key facts that we want to have included because it was part of the decision-making, but Melanie might not know when she's summarizing because she's not supposed to know that. So I foresee there may be things I want to add to ten twenty, but it's not gonna be because I don't like the job Melanie is doing. But sometimes in these meetings, when you have applicants and applications, you know, if, if, if you miss a key point or something is out of context, I just think as the person who's speaking, you want to fix that. And, and it is really important to me that if say like in the last ten six meetings, which were before we abbreviated, there was a, a paragraph where someone was saying something to me and I had a response to that. I, I didn't want to have it just half and not be able to get my answer to that part. And it has nothing to do with Melanie, maybe what she pulls out may be just, you know, not part of what the person's talking thinks is important, I don't know. I guess I'm just trying to say like.
So I, I think probably, uh, uh, my answer to that, Amy, would be that we need to, we need to summarize everything better as opposed to enlarging the minutes. I mean, there, there is no other board that has minutes the length that, that this board does. And, and there's plenty of other boards that have hearings. Um, and not that it's a competition, but you would certainly win for length of your minutes. Um, and so we're trying be, because, because Melanie works for, you know, for our, our department um, during the day, and then we have her, I think it's with four boards. Plus she works, which, you know, isn't your issue, but she works for two other communities and does their board minutes. So, um, she has a, she has a lot on her plate and, and it's just, I just think the mi, the minutes are, again, are not a transcript. And, and if you think that someone is being more represented than you, um, then, you know, I'll, I'll do a better job of reviewing the minutes before we send them out. Um, so that there's e- equal time, I guess, for all parties or something.
Can I, can I just say something?
Okay.
I think that if for some reason, um, if you're concerned about like an appeal or something, you can simply say, you know, if you had, for example, Amy, a discussion about why you disagree with something, then someone could clearly summarize it in two sentences, that Amy disagreed with this because she felt of the impact it had to do with this. Without all the detail behind it, because you remember right now, you have a videotape and you're on YouTube, and so everything is out there anyways. So I think, I don't think that, I think we talked about this before, you can get into thirty or forty pages. Or you can do it in like five pages and then just do a narrative, a small summarization about what somebody was saying.
Some of them do have an impact, like when you read back to the two thousand eight, two thousand nine bylaw changes, it's good to go back and see, oh, they took this out because of that, or they added this because of that. Certain things are important when you go back in history. Or you try to figure something out. And I'm not saying maybe the next will be fine.
Thing is, you can do that in a sentence, you don't have to do that in a paragraph. Right? We took out this because we thought of this, but you don't have to do a whole paragraph about why the whole discussion happened. Right? Um, and that's, because I've been on the board where board members have, um, like yourself, wanted to have a lot more detail. And then you have seen the board fluctuate from a lot more down to almost bullets, which I think would probably drive you guys crazy, to, and Kathy can remember those times, to right now where I think you have a nice middle ground, so. Um, as your long, as your meetings get into three hours, you can go into, you know, a lot of pages of minutes. So I think it's, it's good to do a small summarization.
Okay, well, I think it was a good suggestion to take the last batch that we have because we obviously have three sets and kind of figure out, you know, Amy, to your point, sometimes it differs whether or not it's more or less, but at least like it's a good sampling of, at, at least we have a baseline of what works, so that there's some sort of guidance of what, what we typically would look for, the level of detail we typically would want to see. And, and maybe it, um, it's evident in the last three sets of minutes, so why don't we use that as a barometer? And then come back next, on the sixteenth and just, you know, give a little bit more direction to Fred's point, so that Melanie can have her marching orders and not go too crazy.
I wanted to thank you for considering that, Carrie. Um, it's mostly a selfish point on my part is, um, over the years, we've had trouble filling that position. And I don't want to lose someone who does a good job, in my opinion, on all the other boards because she's frustrated about the direction she's given from you guys, so thanks for considering it and, uh, hopefully we can all come to an agreement.
All right, well, Melanie, I'm sorry about that. You're, you're doing a great job. Stick with us.
Okay.
Um, anything else that we need to cover before we adjourn? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Anthony?
Aye.
Amy? Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Aye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.